Call the meeting to order, stand for the flag please. Clerk will call, roll call.
Councilman Gary Donovan. Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor is absent, Councilman Ronald Quagliani.
Here.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky is not here, Councilwoman Melli Garthwaite.
Councilwoman Melli Garthwaite, second district here.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbally.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbally, third district here.
Councilman Mitchell Gallinari.
Councilman Mitchell Gallinari, fourth district, present.
Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton is absent, Councilwoman Catherine Tucker is absent, Councilman Victor Boris is absent, Councilman Robert Bruno.
Councilman Robert Bruno, ninth district, present.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, tenth district, present.
And Chairman Peter Masaro.
And Chairman Peter Masaro, present.
And I will read the call.
Clerk will read the call of the meeting.
West Haven City Council, notice agenda of special meeting, June ninth, twenty twenty-two, five P M. In accordance with rule number eleven of the rules governing the actions of the city council, Chairman Masaro has called a special meeting of the West Haven City Council to be held at five P M. On Thursday, June ninth, twenty twenty-two. The meeting will be held at the city of West Haven, three fifty-five Main Street, third floor, city council chambers.
Thank you, Stacy. Before we begin, I would like to have Kenny explain each item first before we decide anything for it or against, so we get a good idea of what's going on. If anybody wants to talk at the time of that certain subject, you may get up and speak and talk about your project if you want for a short period of time.
Is she asking for a statement?
Is this okay? I mean, we didn't do that previously.
Well, nobody got up before. We have people here.
Okay.
What do you ask for? A public session? There's no public session on the agenda.
No.
You're right. I thought we were talking.
No, there's no public session on the agenda.
Okay, so I'm sorry, we'll skip that. There'll be no public session. You want to start with the communication? The windows, you want to do the windows one more time? All right, let's communicate, communication fourteen. A fourteen.
May I hand something out, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we got that.
I'd like to share some information on the Arts Center. I'd like to start by talking about Malloy School. When the Board of Ed closed Malloy School, the intent was to return the school back to the city. Instead, Malloy School became a very much needed community center. It's presently used on a regular basis by the Seahawks Cheerleading Team. The Fire Department holds classes at Malloy. The Police Department uses it for training. Park Rec uses it in the gym for pickleball. Park Rec uses it for Zumba. The Community House has two classrooms there. Little League practices for winter workouts. The Board of Ed has a copy center. The Board of Ed has a Facilities Department. Shipping and receiving for the Board of Ed District occurs there. Professional workshops for teachers use the building, and there's a preschool assessment team office. And those are just the regular activities that happen. There's a whole host of other smaller activities that use that building. There's a need in the community for a community center. I know, as owner of West River Hall, that I get calls on a regular basis for nonprofits and organizations to use space because there's such a lack of space in the city. If you call Stratford, they'll tell you they have six community centers. If you call East Haven, they'll tell you they have four. The town of Orange has an entire school committed to community centers for various activities. The importance of a community center is that the community has a place to go, free of charge, to use space, to do various things that create social fabric throughout the community. The location of that building is ideal for that situation. My concern is that if we don't look at it a little bit differently, that building, we will dump seven million dollars into in total, if you approve the money tonight, and in a short period of time, it'll look like the West Haven Conference Center and not taken care of. I think that there should be a tenant there who's responsible for the building. The city should have that tenant run that building. It should be available to the arts. It should be available to the community. It should service the entire community and not just a small subpopulation. I asked the West Haven Community House to take a tour there yesterday. An organization like that could maintain that building, run the building, make sure it stays clean, make sure it's properly maintained, and as councils and mayors and administrations turn over, you will have a consistent body at that building maintaining it, and it will serve the population long after everybody here is gone. If it's committed to one purpose only, you have to ask yourself, where's the funding coming from? Who's taking care of it? We have that situation already at the West Haven Conference Center. So, I would suggest the council consider funding this project with the condition that it be open to the entire community, it be heavy on the arts, and it house a permanent tenant who could take care of the building. In my opinion, I think that's the only way it works.
May I ask you?
So, what you present tonight is different than what we have in the proposal. I understand, you know, I'm not saying that's good or that's bad. It's just different than what we have in the proposals. I think I would like, me personally, I think this is an item that needs further discussion. I think, you know, Mr. Chairman, if we have another meeting, maybe if we're discussing the Arts Center, maybe we bring the Arts Council or the head of that in here to kind of discuss their vision of the building or the mayor's vision or I know I would be, and I think all those are good options. I think Ken's right. We do need a community center, but without seeing a business plan on how this building's going to be run or a budgetary plan on where the money is going to come from to run the building, you know, I would be hesitant. I would tell you that I would, I would move forward like we did with other ones to say, hey, listen, we'll move forward because we want to see a business plan and a budget, but I'm not quite sure that we've determined what the use is going to be. I don't know how you create a business plan until you know what the use is. Is it going to be strictly an art center? Is it going to be an art center or a community center? Is it going to be a community center with the opportunity for everybody to book space, including the art center, but no exclusivity to the art center? So, I got a lot of questions.
Do you have any thoughts on what he just said? Because I agree. And I'm sorry I was late.
So, I think what we know is this. I think we know we desperately need a community center in town for the amount of population that we have. We don't have enough open space, conditioned space. I think we also know that the city has demonstrated over time, running these buildings doesn't work out, and I use the West Haven Conference Center. I think it's an, I think we also know that there's no place right now for an art center. That building is almost fifteen thousand square feet. It could be everything. It could be an art center. It could be a community center. It could be a lot of things. And I think we have a unique opportunity to make it that. I'm giving you sort of a high level view. I don't have the details for you, but the city should not run the building long term. That's my opinion.
So, is your ask for us to come up with the ideas that we want to see in that? Or do you want, say, what the councilman was stating is that to take back this preliminary approval to your committee to see what interest you can drum up before we put any money into it? You know, put out an R F Q or I get me confused, R F P, whichever one it is, just to see what you and your committee can come up with to then come back to us with something more? Like, what is, because I am, I agree with the councilman. I'm not ready to approve three point five million to kind of, ah, I think we're going to do this.
You know, one of the things you've got to consider too is we've already approved three million that's sitting in the building. We have a three million dollar spend already in the building, and you can't use it for anything. The building, with that three million dollars, the additional money that you may, you may approve, we could turn it into finished space with an elevator, and it could be an art center and a community center, run by a third party who maintains it. That, that's the overall high level plan. Now, who is that third party? I don't know. I mean, that would have to go out to bid. You'd have to, you know, talk to the various organizations that can handle that, but that's not going to happen before you build it. I mean, they're going to want to see what it looks like before they can put in a proposal. The money that we're asking for tonight, we could build this thing out with the money we've already spent and the state grant that we already got, and make this a beautiful building, all the floors finished, an elevator, and then, you know, populate it. But keep it off the city rules.
I'm good.
So, this has been something that I've been talking about with all of my residents heavily because it's a big chunk of ARPA. And a lot of my residents feel like, you know, we thought we were going to get paving. We're not getting paving. So, now we're going to get this art center. Some of the residents feel like, you know, it's not in the best location. It's, some people have said to me, they feel like at night, it's not safe there. A lot of them feel like maybe we should be investing in the roads instead of investing in an art center.
So, obviously, the investment is ultimately up to you, to the council. I would say that investment into that building would make it a safer community. It would raise property values. It would get rid of a vacant building, and it would create, it would pay, pay back forever constantly. A road is a temporary expense. You, you know, right now, using example, the brownies, okay? For almost the better part of a year, they had no place to meet. I donated a conference room for them. People should have a place to go when people with limited resources are doing good things for other people with limited resources. When we built City Hall, I fought and got permission from John Bacard to put four conference rooms in. Nobody, nobody thought we needed a conference room. These conference rooms are booked all the time. They didn't exist before we put them in. And there is no available conditioned space right now if you want to get a group of people together that you can just go to and feel at home and be safe.
Right, right. I just would like to see a business plan that's current. I'd like to see something that shows that this is a sustainable project, something that would, some sort of proof. I mean, I personally, for me, I would vote yes for myself because I'm, I'm, you know, in the arts field. I, I have to represent my whole district, and only two people, including myself, want an art center.
Well, but again, you have fifteen thousand square feet. You would have an art center, but you'd have a community house that would service the entire community on every level, not just a subpopulation.
Right. That has to come back to us, you know? We've got to take that back out to the community. You can't, I personally cannot, I cannot say yes unless we have that all as a plan.
All set?
Ken, thanks again for bringing that up.
I think you're right. We do need one here, you know, and we've heard people come up from, the residents come up and say, we need a, you know, senior center or a community center, so we can't have this extravagant thing. I'm for the art center. I am for, as I think most are. I'm also for having this community center put in there. Now, we, if we do vote and we do pass it, and they start to work, that other stuff you're talking about, we can get that taken care of down the road, I'm assuming, correct? Yeah, the goal would be to spend the money before we lose the opportunity to spend it, obviously. With the money that we have, you know, we're going to be pretty generic in what we're doing there. We need sprinklers. We need fire alarms. We need an elevator. We need ADA access. That eats up a big part of the budget. So, really, you end up with a finished, brand new, safe space that could be converted into many things at any, at any moment. No one's going to go in there and say, I want to use this building, so I have to move this wall now, or the elevator's in the wrong spot. We're not going to deal with that, you know? And the other thing too is, everybody talks about how we want to build the center up, and I totally agree, the center needs to be changed, and we have to start somewhere, and I think the art center would be, start again, community art center, however we want to call that. I think we should pass it, and then we're, you know, get to that other point afterwards. At least we can get it built and, you know, the stuff that we need to get done. But maybe, I mean, I'd be voting for it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I am also in favor of, kind of, the community house. So, they would be there full time?
So, again, I, I just gave, I didn't want to come here and say tonight, maybe the community house would be a good option to, to run that building, without talking to the community house.
So, they would run the building?
Again, I'm talking high level. I can tell you this. The community house came, they looked at the building. One concept is they could put some offices in the basement. They would then manage the use of the free space to the community. They would maintain the building. There may be some for, some revenue avenues, depending on who needs the space, that would help maintain the building. That was one option, and they may have a small program there. But, but the idea is that you'd have someone there seven days a week. You wouldn't have, where you lock the door and no one goes in for two or three days, the building would be properly maintained. And I think you need some organization, that's one of the very good ones, by the way, but you need some organization that could take responsibility, take ownership, even though the city would own the building, they would, you know, act like an owner, and keep this thing maintained. Otherwise, what happens is you have a leak in the roof, no one addresses it, now we're just going to close this room because there's mold growing in there, and it just goes on and on and on, and you end up with what you have down the street.
I understand. How long do you think it would take for you to come back to what sort of plan I just would?
Well, we have other funds, and we're moving ahead with the architect to get this thing designed. You know, I could put, I could think about it more and, you know, consult with the city and give you some more concepts, but at some point, we would have to present a building that would go out to bid with a predetermined plan and organization, how you want to run it. And the most viable one is the city owns it, the organization has a permanent, you know, stay there, if you will. They maintain it. How much of that would be city funds? I don't know. How much would be revenue? I don't know. We'd have to get proposals from, from these various organizations.
Thank you, Ken. No, no.
Ken, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Between the state gave us money and plus what the mayor, the ARPA plan is, that amount of money, could this get started? Like, you're speaking of a center for the kids, the youth center, and for the art center? I mean, could it be wrong? Are we going to hear more and more about stall tactics? Because I'm tired of reading in the paper how people of West Haven paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars to go to Newport, Rhode Island, to go see a play. You know, and, you know, by the time, where something here, people my age and the middle-aged people would like to see something like a play or something even for the kids from high school if they're studying, you know, arts and stuff like that. They could practice there and all stuff like that. I mean, we got to bring something here for the people of West Haven. And be honest with you, I've been here, sitting in this chair, not this chair, over there, for four years, going on five years. I haven't really seen anything that came to this city to help our taxpayers. I mean, we got a few restaurants, big deal. We have nothing for enjoyment. I mean, fireworks, okay, we get fireworks every year. My question is, it's close to five million dollars. Are we going to get started? Is there going to open up the door? In other words, is it going to work? I have to agree with, with Councilman Quagliani. We got to have a plan. If we get a plan and see where we're going to end up with this five million dollars between the ARPA plan and the state money, how far can we get with that?
You, you really need a plain box that's finished and safe, conditioned space to market it. You, you, we've been trying to plan, the city as a whole has been planning this building since two thousand and five. You go in there, you got dead squirrels and dead birds and places gutted. There's, there's nothing happening. You know, once it's built and it's a plain vanilla box, then you can get people in there. You know, I don't know, I don't know who's going to commit because we've had seventeen years of nothing happening there. You know, we, we have an opportunity with limited, we have five million dollars. I could deliver for you for five million, an elevator, a heating system, all life safety, finish the floors, plain vanilla boxes, and now you have something that you can market to the community house or somebody else, and then it would be up to the attorneys and, you know, whoever around to take care of that part of it. But it's got to get built.
Probably to market it and make it as Councilwoman Garthwaite was stating is that if it's not going to be the arts building anymore, then we need to maybe name it something different, start referring to it as something a little bit different because the community is only going to hear arts.
Yeah, I know. So, the problem is that the one point five million is geared specifically for arts. It would, it'd be maintained as the arts building perhaps, with a community, a floor committed to the community. I, I don't think-
I would just make sure that the, the register, when they write this article, they get that, that it's not just, because I get the same thing, you know, I am for the art center. I, I'm hoping that it's going to be the anchor of the center and start something. However, I do understand, I think a community center in fifteen thousand square foot, feet is a lot. So, hopefully, there's opportunities for other stuff. I think it's a gamble. It's kind of a, it's, it's a gamble to think that somebody will come in. We're hoping that somebody's going to come in and want to do that. I think a lot of it is a gamble, right? I mean, we, we put money towards paving, and we know the roads are going to last a year, like, until we have to fill the potholes again. So, I am-
I think, as you say, everything's a gamble.
Yeah.
But you have a much better chance of being successful if that building is purposed for the entire community, not just a small section of the population.
So-
You're all set now? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. So, as I sit here to start out, I will say that where I've gotten in life, I am a huge supporter of the arts. I did it all through high school, seventeen years to the day, Oklahoma, and believe me, everything's up to date in Kansas City. With that being said, I show, personally, I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone but myself, I showed up tonight believing we're voting on an art center. We have people from the public here, part of the arts community, and now we're being told to Council, Councilman Quagliani's point of, well, now we're going to change the avenue out of respect for everyone else in the community who, we've already had public comment strictly being for an art center, and now at the last second, we're going to shoot from hip and say, well, let's make it more community center. I think out of respect for all the groups involved in our community that they would have their chance, to Councilman's point, along with the, a business plan as well, because as Councilwoman Hosky just said, it, you know, everything is a risk, but we voted on things that are a five hundred thousand dollar risk, but this is a three point five million dollar risk. So, with that being said, Ken, my question is, because I usually ask this to you, in regards to supplies and demand and everything, where do we stand in regards to getting this project going if it were to be approved in the next, let's just say, month?
So, we think we have nine to ten months of design and compliance to get through before we can even start. So, we couldn't start right away. The architect has to design everything. There are several sub consultants that are involved. Then we have to get through all the various city, city departments. We think we're ten months out at this point. Okay. Thank you, Chairman. All right, so, so if we do, and I agree with everybody, you know, with getting some kind of a plan, we have interests though already, correct? We, we, listen, we have some high level- Yeah, some high level interest. Here's what I'm telling you. If you had a brand new building there, and you were the belief that the city should own it but not run it, I don't think you'd have any problem finding an organization with a bank account that's been established for a long time to come in, take a small part of it, and act as the, you know, the owner of the building. So, like I said, we already have people interested in this building looking the way it is, which is unbelievable, right? But that's their vision, right? That's, which is, which is good. So, if we, you think you'd be able to get something back to us within a week if nobody's ready to pass this tonight on the stipulation that we need more? I mean, I want to get it going because, like you said, time is ticking, and we need to get this started as soon as possible. I, I guess I would answer it this way. I'd have to sit down with all the arts people, get their input. But then of the day, I think we're looking at a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand a year to do all your required inspections and all your life safety, landscape the building, maintain the building, operating budget, a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. I don't think any one organization can support that building. That's my concern. So, you're, obviously, you'd like to see it go through tonight. Well, if it, if, listen, if it goes through tonight, not, not much is going to change because I'm going to still come back to you with a plan at some point. It's just going to give me the ability to tell the architect we have construction funds. I mean, we're not going to move ahead. Someone, I'm just giving you guys a suggestion. I don't, you know, it's not my call to make that call over there. No, no. I'm just giving you a suggestion. I'm just warning the council that if the city maintains that building, your, your, ultimately, it will be almost eight million dollars will be in the tank. And I agree. I do agree. So, yeah, maybe we should hold off a little until we get, I don't know. It's up to the rest of people here. Nothing changes. If you approve it, the advantage is we will move full steam ahead to getting it completed. If you, if you don't approve it, it'll delay that process a little bit, but it's not the end of the world. I mean, either way, I'm coming back to you with, you know, reports and requests and things like that.
Councilman Quagli- So, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we, our last ARPA meeting, we approved specific communications for plan development only. So, I mean, I would be, I would be in favor of allowing this to move along for plan development only, meaning that you come back with a business plan, you come back with a, you know, Ken just kind of spitballed an operational budget, what are the renovation costs going to be, but in the meantime, Ken, maybe your committee could have an open, a public comment session where people could come and opine about what they want to see that building become, because we had several ARPA public comment sessions, but it was based on it being an art center. So, I think I'd like to hear from the community. But again, in conjunction with that, once you hear from the-
So I think I'd like to hear from the community, um but again, in conjunction with that, once you hear from the community, I I don't have any problem. Time making a motion to approve this in in concept for plan development only with. Submission of a draft operational budget and renovation costs. Matter of fact, I think I'll put that in a motion.
All in favor? You do?
I do, if you don't mind. Um, so am I reading this entire resolution into the record with that as the. Um addition to it?
I would add to it.
Well, yeah, that's what I was gonna do, yeah. Um, so. Is that what the intent is?
So I think, I think we we decided last meeting that the boilerplate's the boilerplate, we don't have to read that part?
Well, except for the resolve, I think that we should maybe do that.
Resolve piece and then the, and then, and then the amendments that I brought forward.
Right. You want me to do that? Did we wanna, anybody else wanna finish with this discussion?
Do you have everything that I said?
I'm I'm almost, almost. Yeah, okay, so we have a resolve that the city council hereby appropriates funding for the following project, three oh four Center Street. Art Center Building, construction funding, three million five hundred thousand. Funds are intended to augment state fund D E C D grant funds of one. A million five hundred thousand received by the city, along with funds on hand of three hundred thousand. Remaining as surplus from phase one construction to construct base building utilities, building and campus elements. That will at least create a usable, multipurpose, community meeting and activity space. A sensibility intended to support community arts activities and. To develop a plan. Submit draft operational budget and operational costs.
It's to develop a business plan. Draft operational budget and renovation costs. And ask the ARPA committee to put this on their agenda and allow public comments, since it's changed, since the proposal has changed since. Since the last public comment.
Okay, develop a business plan, draft operational budget.
And renovation costs.
And operational. Budget costs and renovation. And ask the ARPA committee to put it on their agenda for us, they're next.
Can we just get one comment from Doug, go ahead.
So um, I think Ron's intent is you're not appropriating, and then the language says you're appropriating.
My question, consistent with the council's. Role of approving or not approving whatever has been proposed, I'm wondering whether. Public comment should be solicited for this body rather than the committee. I envision that the committee as, our job is to implement what has been approved and to try to make it happen.
The committee's doing the work.
Right, the committee's gonna develop the business plan, the renovation plan and and the draft budget, so. And 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 there's certainly an opportunity for the public to come here at a regular council meeting. And give their their opinion, but I just thought it'd be more worthwhile since that committee's gonna do the work. That they kinda, they hear from the public as well, that was kinda my thought behind it.
My my only concern was that I don't wanna create the impression that the committee is deciding how money should be spent as opposed to. The council in conjunction with the mayor. If our function is to gather people's opinions and present them, then I I don't see a problem with that.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think you might consider taking the word appropriate out and put reserved in this place. I think that's what Councilman Quaglioni was suggesting. Money be reserved, it's approved in concept. But you don't wanna make the appropriation until you see the plan.
We're hereby reserves funding for the following project. Would you like me to reread it?
Start the discussion.
Oh, I didn't realize we were doing that, okay. Your first, your your motion and his was what she's reading now, wasn't it based on this? So if you're gonna amend this.
Yeah, I think we we would have to change this this word, right?
Right, you don't have to vote on that?
We could just take back the first and second.
Alright, that's my only point, it's, you know, housekeeping and point of orders and all that, you know.
I'll take back my motion and then I'll restate my motion, just changing the word appropriate to reserve.
Okay.
And now the discussion, Ken, is that, are you comfortable with those set of conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And now we can uh. Councilman Gary Donovan? Councilman Ron Quagliani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bridget Hoski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nellie Garthwait?
No.
Councilwoman Sarah Acrobally?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilman Steven Johnstone?
No.
Chairman Peter Mazzaro? And seven, yes.
Motion passes. Wanna take over, uh, Councilwoman Hoski, you wanna take over Doug?
Oh, do you want me to take over?
If you want.
Are we on A fifteen?
A fifteen, no, we did that already, we're on A sixteen.
How exciting, A sixteen, Mr. Carney?
Okay, so um, A sixteen speaks to the funding to the various firehouses. I had the opportunity to go down to West Shore, uh, the sleeping arrangements um are a problem. Uh, the beds are not far enough apart, uh, there is no separate quarters for women firefighters. A mi- a million dollars to that house would not be enough to do a large addition. And uh solve all those problems, but you could do a modular, and I talked to the chief about that. Uh doing a modular that would be connected to the station, it would have uh additional bedrooms, additional bathrooms. And I think that the funds that you're proposing could solve those problems down there. Also on uh Ocean Avenue. Doing some interior remodeling um to um solve some problems over there. And and that's that's a walkthrough that I I saw, and those are, those are the solutions I came up with based on a million dollars. I've not spoken to Center or Allentown. I I I, we, I'm understanding that it's the same problem across the board, but a million dollars, we can.
It's not gonna solve it, you said.
With an addition.
With an addition.
Yeah, I I think the way to go is modulators.
Does anyone have any questions before I have questions? Councilman?
Uh, just for the record, I'd like to state that I'm the uh fire commissioner in the West Shore District. With no benefits for the commission being a part of this, so I will not be abstaining from it. I will put my my input on this.
Thank you.
With that, thank you so much. With that being said. To speak on the shore side, Ken, uh I I wasn't on the, my chief, unfortunately, we have a fire commission meeting tonight that I uh. Chose to come to the council, um, was on the assumption that it would take modulars in the shore. To get us outfitted for safety, correct? We could do it within our own mortar and brick, correct?
No, you don't, you don't have enough room in um in Benham Hill.
So, to make sleeping quarters appropriate for female versus male. Come back to be decontaminized in the event of another breakout of COVID, you're saying we can't pull that off?
Not within the footprint you have now. If if you, if you lost a bay, uh or, you know, you could have room to do it that way, and that would certainly be covering a million dollars, but you'd you'd lose a whole bay.
I don't wanna speak just on behalf of the shore, we do have chiefs here in the audience. What about the the. Shore, the um, I don't, the um Dawson Avenue Station, what what would be the plan there?
Uh, interior remodeling, you have a large space, that's like a community space.
So you could do it there?
Yes, we could, we could bring those walls forward, and we actually talked about a plan uh on that, and and you could cover that with with the money. So you have enough sleeping space there.
For the Center District, we're saying that there's not enough room?
Don't know.
So what are we speaking on, just the shore?
I just visited the shore, but obviously, you know, these stations need more than a million dollars, so. You know, y- you could, you could spend multi-million dollars. A million dollars would get them, I I I think. Whether it be modulators, or if the footprint's large enough in in interior, you can get the sleeping quarters that you want.
Correct, under a million dollars per se, per district.
Correct.
We can still pull that off, under that million dollar.
I believe so.
Thank you, Chief, I have nothing else.
But isn't Allentown not looking for that? I thought, but you haven't spoken to them, so we don't know what they're looking for.
Uh Doug, I think has.
So, the the Center District is actively uh raising funds for a new house. When I say new, they're they're gonna expand what they have, but the the condition is the same. On Elm Street, yeah. The condition they have is the same. Um beds getting together in a bunk room, which isn't safe under pandemic airborne disease. One of the sleeping pods, the same thing they wanted on the shore. With air filtration systems designed to separate the air flows in each pod, and also provide separate but equal facilities for female firefighters. And the way they wanna do it is by taking this million and adding it to their other sources of revenue to start adding on. And I believe that the, are they gonna get a chance to speak? Cause I can speak for him as well, if they're not.
Good evening, thanks uh for the opportunity. Uh, we obviously have a much different situation in Allentown. Uh, when I first got here, it was shared with me that. Building that we work out of on Admiral Street is being eyed by one of the developers. Uh, there's been talk back and forth that we've been hearing that, in fact, that the chief Esposito was actually asked if uh. We could vacate the building in about thirty days, and we kinda laughed, as you, yes, that's true. We were actually asked by that by the attorney, by Attorney Teer. Corporation Council. I, we, I took it at face value, and so, what, besides that fact. Our operational station on Minor Park is tight at best, there's no room for expansion unless we buy. Even if we bought the houses near uh in and around, it wouldn't be enough. Uh, Doug and I have con- have had conversations about that. Right now, we have to do musical fire trucks sometimes to respond to a call, because we do not have enough room to operate the way we are. Uh, we should have, as I already spoken to this board once before. Uh, we need to have in accordance with all the acronyms that govern us, NFPA, OSHA, ISO. We should have six people on duty, we only have five. If I go to go six, I wanna include, I wanna increase our diversity and inclusion. I'm actively looking at uh female firefighters and uh people of of color. To increase our staff, once we get the safer grant, because I, we've received uh some indication that we are probably gonna get that. Um, but once I go, if I go to put a female on, I don't have enough room, I have to modify the building. And I don't even know if I have enough room to do that. And like the other stations, uh, we too are tight in our quarters, in our bunks. The buildings were built fifty and sixty years ago, they were not designed for this day and age. The two thousand nineteen uh ESCI study that the city had performed on its fire services. Uh, actually, West Shore's uh stations were rated fair. Uh, my stations were rated uh poor and fair, and the Centers District's uh stations were all poor. We're in dire need of new facilities to protect this city. The million dollar ask that we. Well, the million dollar offer that the mayor has recommended for us, in my situation, I need a location. I mean, there's money out there that we can try to obtain, but we need to have shovel-ready bids. And a place to put that shovel, I have no place to put that shovel yet. We have been actively working, and in fact, we were supposed to have a meeting this afternoon at two o'clock with uh some UNH uh principals. Uh, that would be able to make a decision as to whether or not they would come in on a joint venture with us. By combining our two stations and making a public safety, combined public safety of building for them as well. And the uh Fire Science Program is very interested in that. Unfortunately, two of the uh people that were supposed to be there today, both had family emergencies. So we are hopefully scheduled for that in two more weeks. However, I digress, we've been actively looking at a spot right across the street from Burgamby Hall. Where the Dunkin' Donuts is. There's not, there's a rock outcrop. And on the other side of that rock outcrop are two uh buildings that UNH owns. That station, that location would be, uh, for, if we're gonna do one station. According to the insurance services organization who did analytics for us, on that location, we would be able to meet our. Response times, so our district and that, and backup from mutual aid to the center. So that would be an ideal location for us to do, and we are actively working on getting that. In fact, I submitted an application and I shared it with corporate council, the mayor, uh Councilman Donovan. The state owns that rock outcrop, and that street in front of the two buildings that, or two houses that UNH uses now. Uh, we would probably get it for nothing. And that's an acre, and then about another acre that UNH has, uh, that would be large enough for us to put a station. I intend on using that million dollars for uh further architecturals, bid-ready specifications. Any site development that would be needed, or acquisition of other property, including that one house on the corner. Uh, if if it was possible, but that's what I'm intending on doing it, because I don't have anywhere to put a new building. And to put money into the two buildings that we have now would not be cost effective.
Portion of these funds needs to address the immediate situation of air filtration.
Correct, and Doug just showed me a sample of the air filtration that we have now. Which would probably be able to be uh removed and replaced in a new station.
Yes, the modular units.
Right, we can sew them, so the air filtration that would also be included in the one million thirty-five thousand would be for air filtration, which. Would absolutely have to happen as soon as we possibly could.
Chief, quick, quick follow-up to that, so, so I understand that that's money for um. Potential use to be combined for a new, a new station, right? So that's realistically, three, three plus years. Out, what happens in the meantime, when, you know, you 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 um, you do another firefighter exam? You're fortunate enough to get a female firefighter come out number one on the exam, you wanna offer her employment, what do we need to do? Um temporarily to to make sure that this space is appropriate?
We would have to probably put in, I don't know, we haven't done a feasibility study as to whether or not. Architecture, we would be able to put in a separate bathroom, or uh a separate sleeping area for her. If that's what we have absolutely lined up with. I'm going to go out on a limb and say, we probably have just enough room to do that. We would probably use the funds for that, uh because you're absolutely correct, I mean. Uh, I hope to see one day, uh, I actually walk into a new station. Yeah, we'd have to repurpose a room, yeah. That's not gonna stop me from moving forward on what I strategically plan for my department. I strategically want to. I strategically want to to increase uh, my manpower, my or my personnel. I wanna increase my diversity, I wanna increase my inclusion. And that won't stop me, we'll figure it out, and that money would be used for that as well. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions for the chief or Ken?
Chief, what about the property down for where seven forty-four is?
We've had conversations with the owner of that, uh, I keep looking at my deputy because we work hand in hand. He's been working on this for a long time, so, uh, I wanna include him on the audience, cause I'm just catching up. Uh, that's a four, the one point eight million dollar ask. Uh, there's been interest on it, as we've been told. Uh, there's been um, yeah, we we've suggested that we could look at that, because it's four acres. We only need about one and a half, two, and I understand there's other needs by the city that possibly could, we would join in with them. But we haven't heard anything back. It's been broached. We, let me just put a cap on this whole thing. Deputy Chief Esposito and myself have been doing everything we possibly can up to what we're authorized to do. We've done the research, we're identifying locations, we're even trying to identify alternative ways to fund this thing. We've looked at land acquisition, I've gone to the state, the state says you can have this piece of property. That piece of property with the rock outcrop, we've actually had contractors come and look at it. Yeah, you can pop the top of that rock without blasting, we crush it, we could use it as a bed. It's viable. Uh, we've done analytics through the ISO as to the location that we really wanna put it. We've uh, communicated with UNH and we still will be, uh, on a concept that we that we uh, have developed jointly. So, so we're pushing everything as far as we could possibly go, but we're waiting for feedback and we're not getting it.
In other words, if you put where that rock is, you're gonna have to close old down shares, and it'll be shut down.
Yeah, but we want to take the two houses that, we've already uh, floated this idea to some of the UNH people. And there's interest. There's special interest by their fire science program, because what we envision, what we've already had uh, drawn up uh, by an architect, is uh, increased bunk areas or actually um, bunk, well, dormitories for people in this fire science program, who would become members of the A, of the Allentown Volunteer Fire Association. It it would be like a college parks Maryland, uh, university. And they're very interested in that. Hopefully, it it comes to fruition.
So, I am very much in favor of putting uh, money into our firehouses. I know firsthand that it's very much needed. With that being said, um, I just have a quick question on, when you say you would use some of this money for architectural use, or is that an appropriated use? So that's referring that right to the attorney, where where we, they could use that for?
If it was in the discretionary um, category, yes. If not, that's something I'm not prepared to speak to.
Okay, my only concern is I'm I'm in favor of a firehouse and all that, I have no problem with it. I'm in favor of putting money into our firehouses, but when you say you're gonna use some of this money toward architects and stuff like that, I just wanna assure that it's a, it's an appropriate use.
Just so we're clear, a- anything that's approved is gonna be vetted on the compliance side, where the committee is in the process of engaging accounting firms in response to bids with expertise both locally and nationally on these exact compliance issues that are appropriately being raised piecemeal. That's not something I wanted to speak off the cuff, but it's clearly very serious, it's gonna be the the focus going forward. Uh, even if something is approved, that's not the end of the story.
Anyone else have any questions? Do you wanna make that motion? This one?
Motion.
That was the other one.
Sure. So what, is this, this is A sixteen, right?
So.
Yes.
I am in favor of it, but I think we should move um, with caution, similar to um, the art center and how that, how we did that. Um, so there to be, you know, a business plan and to come back. So, I don't, we're gonna make a motion in that way.
So we're gonna make a motion that we're going to, we're okay with it, but we wanna see the plan and what's gonna be done to each firehouse. Fair enough, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, prove for plan design.
Prove, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Instead of appropriate, we use encumber.
We we need money to do the plans, guys. We have no money to do the plans.
Two of the firehouses are playing money.
Yeah.
S- question, question one. So, so this is, how much is this? A million dollars each, a million twenty-five?
No, it's a million twenty-five.
So, let's, so let's back up again. So, some of this money is gonna be eaten eaten up by architectural design and permitting and what else, whatever your balance is left, are you reasonably comfortable you'll be able to make the necessary modifications in this communication with the with the amount that you have?
Su- uh, the answer is, for the most part, I I, it sounds like two firehouses will benefit. Allentown's got a unique situation, but here's the deal. These projects, we're talking at a very high level, once you approve the money, I'm coming back multiple times to give you updates, to say we're short money, we have extra money, that kinda stuff. I mean, but without that, money appropriated, I can't go out and start the process and no one's gonna put a lot of time into it without the money. You know, but but you're gonna hear about this twenty-five more times before a shovel ever hits the ground. And I'm gonna give you updates, I'm gonna say we're short fifty thousand here, or here's an extra fifty thousand back. This may not be the best example of giving money back on this one, but that's how it works, we're just at a very high level.
Yeah, I don't think there's gonna be any money given back.
I think that, listen, I think that, you you, point well taken, right? You need, you need some money to start the process, where the other ones, you didn't need any money to start to do RFPs or do do whatever, so I, point taken. So I I would draw my motion.
Alright. I'd like to make a motion, oh, go ahead. Did you wanna say something, Stacy? I apologize.
No, he said roll call, but we really don't technically have a motion on the floor yet.
Yeah, so I wanna make a motion to approve communication A sixteen. Do you want me to? Second.
Okay, um. And do you want me to read it?
I can read it, if you'd like. I'm I'm just doing it from resolved, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolved that the city council hereby appropriates funding for the following project. Capital improvement funds for the three agencies that provide fire protection services to the city of West Haven in the amount of three million seventy-five thousand dollars to do be, to be divided equally between the city of West Haven Fire Department's Allentown, the First Tax- Taxation Fire District Center and the West Shore Fire District. Said funds are to be used to advance construction and or renovation funding of firehouses in each district and support advanced dormitory design that will accommodate ventilation systems designed to mitigate the spread of airborne infectious disease and address longstanding inequities with equal facilities for different gender assuring equal opportunity.
Yeah, okay, you want to do a roll call? And we're we're keeping the word appropriate, appropriate in there.
Any other discussion? Uh, can we have a roll call?
Gary, uh, Councilman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilman Tony Johnson, Councilman Ron Cagliani?
Yes.
Councilman Bridget Hosky?
Yes.
Councilman Melie Garthwaite?
Yes.
Councilman Sarah Acrobali?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell Galagnaro?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone?
Yes.
And Chairman Peter Mazzaro?
Yes.
Before we get to the next one, could I just ask Ken a question? Can you, this was on the table, is this the spreadsheet of where we're at with appro- with money that was appropriated?
That's correct. Um, that that is not the report you asked for, which we're developing now. Um, but this is what the council has approved, has put on hold or hasn't approved yet.
So right now, we still have that fourteen, whatever that initial deposit was, fourteen million and change, right? I think you mentioned something about, we were getting partial payment on the second half soon, right?
Correct.
We really only have fourteen million, so.
No, no, we, I think we have the, we will have all funds by July. Yeah.
The twenty-nine million.
Yes. That's my understanding.
Okay. And so could you, could your committee keep the spreadsheet, so we know where we're at?
Um, we're going to do that, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
And I think we have eighteen next, is that correct?
We know we're getting it all. So how do we know we're getting that other five million? They told us we did, we got a letter?
Yes, we have communications both from the Treasury Department and the state, two amounts of money. One's nineteen million, the other one's five million. It does total up to be uh, twenty-nine over eighty-five. Five seventy-six in total. There's there's no more need to discuss transient, money will be here long before we spend it.
Um, A eighteen?
Alright, so so this one's.
That's interesting. There are households that do not have water, yeah? This allows someone to go into the library, collect a broadband device, like they would collect a book, bring it home, have broadband, and this hundred thousand would pay for it. If approved, the ARPA committee. The hundred thousand?
I'm sorry? Wait, what's the question?
A hundred thousand broadband to the library.
Still water, A eighteen, trust me, wasn't approved, cause I'm not in favor of it.
Not not the last meeting, the meeting prior.
No. Trust me, we won't count you.
Do it again.
So, what the ARPA committee would offer is we would collect invoices up to five thousand dollars, do it in five thousand dollar increments, and then distribute it, have City Hall distribute a check to to the library. So it wouldn't be a hundred thousand at once. And the hope would be that homes that don't have broadband, or Wi-Fi access, I should say, could go into the library and and get Wi-Fi whenever they want. Go ahead. I know that look, I know that look, go ahead.
I am very much in favor of providing broadband to people in the community that don't have it. I believe in my world that we are missing, um, I'm just wondering if we would benefit more from, cause I'm just against this, right? I want broadband in in, out in the city, I want it down at the beach, I I, it makes me crazy, Ken. But I'm just wondering, would we benefit if we were allowing kids in the schools, right? Kids who go home and can't do the work or or they don't have access.
Yeah, this, uh, Doug, as you reminded, the school has a program already. Um, we, every kid has a laptop.
And it has broadband on it?
Yeah, they give them a stick.
And they hook up to?
Who's that?
So all, all of the kids have access and they all get broadband?
They they all get Wi-Fi from their device, yeah. So so I think what it comes down to is this. Wi-Fi is available to everybody in the town if they pay for it, right? Um, there are homes that can't afford to pay for it. There have the opportunity to get it now free of charge by going to the library, taking out this device, like they would take out a book, and this hundred thousand would fund that. And and that would be an immediate um, resolution to a need in the community.
To the people who go to the library.
Well, but this is not, this is, this is a reason why you'd go to the library if you never went before. You you know, we could publicize this.
So this, this program is a, a program. It's run by many libraries throughout the state, and the the grant is, every year is competitive. We applied for this grant on behalf of the library, we missed it by one point, they just ran out of money. So, the ask from the library was to provide the money that they did not get from the state grant, so that we could have this opportunity here in the state. It's income qualified and they have a whole plan set up on how this operates, but basically you go in and you borrow a Wi-Fi hotspot, and when you're done with it, you can turn it.
Do you have a question? How long does it last? How long does the device last?
Well, the device is, like any hotspot, it would, it would uh, it's got a cellnet account, plug it in and charge it.
I mean, how long do you have it for? Do you have it for several months? Do you have it, how long does?
So that, that's part of the program rules. The library would set up based on demand. So the library would determine how long you could take it out for. A hundred thousand is a lot of devices.
How many devices do they have now?
None. Oh, why don't they?
I don't think. My, uh, we all not believe they have this program already, this is an enhancement? That's my understanding that they have a pro, that's why I don't.
They they applied for the money, they did not get a mortgage. We helped them write that grant. But the state ran out of money, so.
I, 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 do we, oh, and and Doug, I'm, I just saying, I, it was sworn, when they came before us, they told us about their broadband, that they give devices to people in the library to go home and use it.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Not on this scale, I don't think.
I'm I'm not familiar with with that.
No, no, and and I, and I understand what you're saying, you know, not on this s- scale, um.
I I can tell you that if this is approved, many households would be able to do a lot more than they're doing now, and they get, they'd get Wi-Fi.
They they had identified about um, five hundred households that were eligible, income eligible for the state program. I remember that from my experience.
So can you educate me on, I wanna follow up on uh, Councilwoman uh, Garthwaite's uh, comment. Could you educate me on a hotspot? So at what point, so once we give this hotspot out, is it forever? Is it, do they get Wi-Fi access forever? Is it six months? Or is it, how do, how do we retrieve it? How does that work?
So the program that we helped them write the grant for, it's it's a year ago, so. So what they're gonna do is go to Verizon or one of those providers, and they're gonna rent a huge block, case of these things. And they all have accounts, and the library can control the account for that hotspot. If the hotspot doesn't come back, they can shut it off from their office. So they'll have a, an interface. And based on demand, you can keep the hotspot. If it's oversubscribed, they start shortening the time period you can have it. You gotta bring it back for a week, let someone else have it, that type of thing. But as long as they have enough supply to meet demand, they can stay out.
Is there a monthly charge that, that, you know?
That's what this pays for, this funds the monthly charge for that device.
So, the library, as we know, is not really part of city government, right? Refund them, they have their own board, they make their own decisions. So my concern, listen, I think it's a good program, and I do think they're doing this on a smaller scale, if I remember from their budget um, uh, when they come in front of us, but how do we make sure that they buy, we put all these checks and balances in place, I got Ken jumping through hoops, we got you guys, the purchasing, so how do we make sure that the library meets those same requirements by making sure it goes out to bid and do all that stuff?
Report your opening statement.
Yeah, so so, what what we would do is.
I was in the hallway for your opening.
Oh, so you missed it, yeah. Um, our plan is that when they amass five thousand dollars in invoices, we take it out of the hundred thousand. So it it would happen in five thousand dollar increments. And of course, they would have to um, follow the purchasing ordinance, which we would make sure they they did. A- any of this money is subject to the purchasing ordinance.
Right, but who's gonna decide, okay, we 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 have a need for these hotspots, um, who's gonna, I mean, Verizon, T-Mobile, whoever else is out there, I mean, that that's gotta go out to bid, right?
The library will put that out to bid. The library will put that out to bid. Uh, well, listen, we're gonna make sure they do. They, they gotta put it out to bid, right? It has to go out to bid, whether the library does it or we do it, you know, we'll be watching it either way. And then as they amass those invoices, we'll pay the bills. At five thousand dollars. And they have access to the state bid list as well.
So, how many, it's hard to tell depending, I don't know what the program is, if they say you have it for ninety days or whatever, but how many? How many households would we potentially, um, be providing for? Do we know? I mean, that was probably part of the grant submission, right? We have to let them know that we have, you know, house, households in need, and we could. We could, you know, distribute these to X amount of households that currently don't have. Um, and, and how do we know they don't have internet service? So maybe they have internet service, are they, is it like an income eligible?
Yes, it's all based on income, it's all based on income. Yeah. If, if you don't meet the income requirements, you can't rent the device.
The library would, would check for income verification and all those things.
Li- listen, I, I, I'm sure someone's gonna slip through the cracks, but, but the bottom line is, if it goes out to bid, we dole it out in five thousand dollar increments. We supervise the bidding process or do it ourselves, you're gonna, a lot of families are gonna benefit from this. That's what it comes down to. No, nothing's perfect, but.
No, but I think there is, in my mind, I, I, I agree, we could bring Wi-Fi to pa- the families that don't have it. I think that's valuable. I'm just, I'm more about the process.
Sure.
Alright, thank you.
About a hundred and thirty-eight units a month, for two years.
That's the hundred thousand covers.
Thank you.
So it's two years. This hundred thousand dollars, if it was approved, would, these hotspots would be provided. For T-Mobile, five thousand dollar increments, but up to two years, that's my question, right? Then a hundred grand would run out?
It's theoretical, I mean.
Well, let me just say this, so, so the hundred thousand powers, a hundred and thirty-eight units for two years, how the library sends those out? One household may have it for three months, another household may have it for two months, yeah.
I was just looking for total amount of time for that kind of money that we're gonna invest.
We think a hundred and thirty-eight households for, for two years.
Thank you, nothing else.
Ken, I have a question.
Sure.
How does the application process work for eligibility? And who would be in charge of that at the library?
So, I don't know the inner workings of the library, somebody would be in charge of it over there. Um, paid staff. There would be an application, I'm sure, and you'd have to prove.
That you have less income, and you can't afford this, and then from that, you could, you could borrow the device.
Okay, would that be like the same day? You would be able to borrow the device with the app, with the application, or would they have to do background? To see if that person is actually eligible?
You know, let, let's talk about that for a second. I, I don't think, I don't think that there's a background check going on, or a credit reported or anything like that. I, I think what happens is, if a person has Wi-Fi in their house, they're not gonna go down to the library, fill out an application. To get another Wi-Fi device that only works in their house.
Right.
Okay, now, is someone gonna scam the system along the way out of the hundred thirty-eight homes? Probably, okay? But the mass majority of homes that don't have Wi-Fi will now have a Wi-Fi device, thanks to this grant. That's what it comes down to. And, 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 you know, I'm not, nobody in the ARPA committee is close enough to what's happening on the front lines of the library. To start dictating what the process is. I think they do a good job with it, and with this asset, they're gonna make sure the people need to get it.
Right. And do you think that the process, would that be something that would be, um, completed right away after?
Oh, yeah.
It would, okay.
If, if, if this is approved, this is gonna happen immediately.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman?
No, you cannot have a Wi-Fi piece, you're not, you're not eligible, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Now, my question is, my question is this, I would be in favor for this, but with one stipulation. Anyone with the library, as we do, my stipulation would be in this, is that. Richie Spire's office puts this out to bid for them.
Sure.
That's the only way I would pass this.
Yeah, so we think they're gonna actually use the state bid list, and Ricky Spire could monitor that. Um, there are services on the state bid list that will, or been put out to bid, which would allow for the immediate deployment of these funds. Uh, but I'll make sure Ricky's involved.
Yeah, state bid, I don't care where it is, it still go through his office, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman?
Uh, Ken or Doug, because we know what's gonna happen, whether it's minor or major. What happens when someone doesn't return the device and it gets shut off? Who's responsible for that device to pick up the tab, when the company, whoever does it, says, hey, you're missing twenty-five devices? Who's, you know, you're on the hook for it.
So, A, they could buy insurance, B, they just create a self-insurance fund, put five thousand aside for that lost device.
Okay.
Typically, these devices, the end of two years, are obsolete, and they trash anyway.
Just to go off of that, they, meaning the library?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you meant they. Yeah, we, we don't want any, we don't wanna hear from people saying they, you know, they didn't get it, or they got it, or they lost devices, all on the library.
Right.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
So Ken, so, how would you, now with, with your committee, or you would, would sit, you know. Say this gets approved, right?
Yes.
So the next step would be.
I, I mean, the library and Ricky Spire.
Right, so can you, I'm, I'm not gonna make it a, a condition, but I do think they do this already, to a, probably a smaller extent. I'd really like to see what their program requirements and application form is for the current program. I would imagine they're just gonna continue that program and have more availability for people that need it, so. Just for, just for curiosity's sake, I'd like to see what the program.
I'll bring you a pack, the council package, it's in the car.
Thank you.
A- and to just build on that, I, I don't want to, this money to go towards paying for what they have now.
This isn't a, a, above and beyond.
No, no, right, I know, like, I want this, I want us to ensure that this, that they're not submitting five thousand dollar invoices to pay for what they have. What they're, you know, the twenty they might have, that there needs to be, okay. So, um, I'll make a motion to bring this out favorably.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Could I add something on that? What I said, that I like to go through the city hall's, uh, procedure of bidding.
Add that when I read it, yeah.
It's already in the language, it's in the boilerplate language already.
Okay. Roll call vote.
He's got, I think she's gotta read the, the resolve part first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, he did roll call vote before you did.
I'm sorry, I jumped again.
Oh, your parents.
There are a lot. Resolve that the city council hereby appropriates funding for the following project, broadband access of a hundred thousand dollars. This project will establish a micro grant fund operated by the West Haven Library. To provide assistance to households facing negative economic impacts. Due to COVID nineteen via micro grants, including costs for reasonable administrative services, digital literacy training. And other programs that promote access to the internet. This program will be developed and operated by the library. Income qualified households shall make applica- shall make application to the library for assistance. Either through loaned hotspots or monthly subsidies to internet subscription.
Give her a second.
We got it, we did it already, so I'm ready for the roll call, if somebody's gonna call that.
Roll call vote. Councilman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilman Ronald Coadyani?
Yes.
Councilman Bridget Hoskey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Melie Garthwait?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Acrobally?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell Gallinano?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilman Steve Johnstone?
Yes.
And Chairman Peter Mazzaro?
Yes.
Oh, oh, A nineteen, is that, oh, my apologies. Oh, I think you're Ken Carney.
What happened?
So there's an A nineteen on the packet on the, um, desk.
Drive the cans, wanna make you happy tonight?
That's what I just said, you're trying to show off. I'm not mad at you, I'd wanna show off too. Um, so, make me happy, what do you have?
Okay, so, we've had some meetings with the PD. Um, I'm starting to hear, uh, some better stuff. From my standpoint, what I need to understand is, uh, the exact need, everything goes out to bid. Who's gonna engineer the system? What is the lifespan? Does it meet the needs of the end user? And I think we are working through that. Um, I also look at this, a million dollars, guys, is a drop in the bucket. You, you could spend twelve million dollars in this program. Uh, so I feel comfortable asking the council to consider the million, because that'll get the ball rolling. Uh, it has to begin with, uh, putting out to bid the design of these cameras. I've heard some things like, oh, we have a designer, or we have an engineer, we, we really gotta go out to bid to secure that. There's talk of these things being powered, um, off of, um, existing poles. Uh, and also possibility of some car chargers powering them. Uh, but I feel much more comfortable after those meetings than I did last time I was here. And we need to, uh, you know, go through the purchasing ordinance, uh, meet those guidelines and develop a plan and, and move ahead, for, for the entire boardwalk.
Say that again?
For the, for the boardwalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I don't really know, it's not my cup of tea, I drink coffee, but I'm gonna give it a whirl, okay? It is my understanding that there is fiber optic. Down at the board, but down at the boardwalk right now, that we've had that wiring, I don't know if we call it wire, but it's.
Yeah.
For years. We've never turned it on because.
We don't care because, right?
Listen, if I get started on that, I'm gonna digress, then I'm gonna get annoyed, and it's, it can just be ugly. We don't want that, um. So, my, my thing is this, many times, Ken, and you might have heard me say it, is that we do all these different. Cyclones, everyone's doing their own thing. We don't ever come together to kinda do it together. Kinda like your thoughts on the art center being these multiple different things. So right now, you know. We want, when I say we, as a collective, many residents want broadband access Wi-Fi down at the boardwalk. But how do we make that happen and run wire for the West Haven PD, because they're on a completely different server? And just to be as transparent as I possibly can, they don't, we don't work together. We, we would, we would do broadband and spend two million to get Wi-Fi down there, and then spend another. Two million to get wiring down there for the cameras. And why can't we come together and have Thanksgiving?
It's, it's worse than you're describing.
It is worse.
Yeah, yeah, we, we go to a meeting, we hear all this stuff, we leave the meeting. We go to another meeting with another group of people, we hear the exact opposite, we go back to those people, and they say, well, yeah, you're right, but not really, it's a mess. It, it needs to start from the very beginning. It starts with a council approval for, for the million dollars, and then we go out and we hire an engineer. Who does this on a regular basis, we do discovery as to what we have and we don't have. I'll be reporting back to you that, hey, guys, we thought this is gonna be fiber optic, but now half of our Wi-Fi, I don't know. I don't know, because you hear different stories every time you talk to somebody.
But, so I said all of that to say, and I'm cutting you off, I apologize, please continue.
No, and then, and then from that, I would have a, a full plan, it would go out to bid to a vendor, and it would get done. And I will keep the council updated along the way.
So, I appreciate that. So the reason I am asking is because there's broadband access. Of four hundred and eighty-five thousand put aside for broadband access in just the city. So why isn't this asked one point four eight five? Well, it's, and, and I appreciate it, not to me, because if we're gonna lay wire down there, why isn't it wired for the West Haven PD? And the, why can't we have multi-use wire? Like, there's another almost half a million dollars that's supposed to be allocated by the ask of the mayor. To do this, like, or is that in this? And I, it's just not divided up, and I don't know.
Our original concept was that the broadband project would support the camera project. But the police are saying that this is.
Bicycle, and they wanna drive a Maserati, speed. And they just don't think we have the infrastructure to support what they wanna do with the cameras. Like Ken said, that needs to be vetted. And perhaps there's synergies to bring the two together, once we get a third-party engineers and experts in this.
So, I'm just gonna ask, and I just want us to know that depending on what the answer is, I might get annoyed. Um, has our IT director, the, the man that we, the city, pay to do this stuff? Been brought to the table as well? Like, he, he's saying that too, because when I talk to him, he's saying, yeah, we gotta get in a room and figure this out, Councilwoman.
So I forwarded an email from Jemaine to the chairman this afternoon, and he said he does not have a project.
That will meet the conditions in ARPA for broadband expansion at this time. But that might change if we bring his network into the police camera scenario. We, we, we need a third party to come in and figure this mess out.
Yeah.
And we, and we, and here's. Here's a safeguard. We could spend five or six million easily. We know a million dollars is gonna go all towards those cameras.
And, and I'm just, and I know, and I'm gonna let, I'm sorry. I, I, and I appreciate that, and, and I know that. I would just hate to lay additional whatever down there, when there's fiber optic down there. And then the citizens of this city still never get the broadband, because I know even if we turn the broadband down, um, down there. We gotta figure out how we're gonna foot that bill. I just, sometimes, you know, we, we, we build a cart over here. And then we put the horse in the buggy over there, and just, we're, we're working, and we just never bring it together to have the train.
Yeah, I, I, I think what's nice about this process is, you know, we have access to all the different players. We have willingness to bring a third party in, we have the funds, which motivates everybody, and, and you're gonna have this package.
And Jemaine also said that that's what, his new hire, the person that we approved him to get a new position, is supposed to be able to assist with. So I'm gonna stop talking, um, uh, Councilwoman Garthwait was first.
Oh, um, okay, I didn't have a question.
Oh, I thought you did.
No, 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 I'll just, I'll say that I'm, I'm really excited that you doubled it, because I thought in the beginning, five hundred thousand dollars is not enough, it's just not enough.
You were, you were a hundred percent correct.
Wasn't enough, so.
And when you asked the question, I don't understand how you attend a meeting based on five hundred thousand, and then you say, guys, is that enough? Oh, no, it's not. You know, so I, so the real answer is a million dollars.
Yeah, I, I'd like more money, but.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Councilman?
So just, just so I'm, I'm on the same page here. So A eighteen is broadband access, a hundred thousand, which we voted on already. And then four eighty-five for community broadband and park Wi-Fi, and then A nineteen is five hundred thousand dollars. For traffic and boardwalk monitoring cameras. So what, what, what are we discussing?
Four eighty-five, we don't have a viable project.
We wanna move that into A nineteen.
Into where?
A nineteen.
A nineteen.
Yeah.
Right, and then this, we deforested someplace with this handout here, but there's. What is this vigilance? It's, it's, it lists a bunch of camera locations, but there's eighty-five of them. So what is, what is, did you give us this?
No. The police department did. But, but again, Ron, it, it's, there's little pieces of the puzzle all over the place.
Right.
I need a third party who has no affiliation.
Put them all together, right? So at the end, at the end, you, you know, exactly right, you have to look at the infrastructure, what's lacking, you know, and, and, there's so many. So what, what I would say is, is I, I trust you to bring everybody together and make sure, as Councilwoman Hoskey said, that we have a, um. A collaboration on this, it's, it's a significant project, a significant amount of money, but I also encourage, you know, a lot of people have already done this, right? Right, right to our east, right? New Haven has an incredible system with thousands of cameras.
Hundred and twenty-seven million dollars.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, but it, it doesn't matter what the scale of the system, it, it, I mean, how, how is it deployed? You know, what, what are we using in these remote locations? What's the dashboard that you use? Can we put some of these cameras up on our website? So the community can look as well too, more, more eyes and ears, those types of things.
You, you know, if I just may for a moment, um, for years, I ran the security grant, um, for the Board of Ed as a volunteer. And we managed to put cameras in several of the schools, I sat with Honeywell, uh, we created passwords, we made sure everybody had access. I'm hearing today, the police doesn't have access. It it's just, you know, and I don't know where the disconnect was, but I wanna restore all that access. Uh, and I could do that with the third-party consultant to guide me through this, and just stay on everybody, and get it done.
I mean, it's not hard and stuff, beca- again, you know, um, you know, at the university, you know, University of New Haven, we have over seven hundred cameras. Right, we maintain them, and it's 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 internet-based, but they're secure, I mean, it's just, it's it's. Everybody's got cameras these days, right, there's no reason why we can't do it.
You're a hundred percent correct.
Um, I am just like thrilled, and I appreciate you listening, not listening, but hearing me.
Of course.
My concerns at the last meeting, and, you know, a million dollars is probably just, you know, getting the foundation, so. I don't wanna use up all of the upper money, cuz if you come back, you're like, oh, we need another half a million, I want to put in, I I want a rope, I wanna try to.
Sure.
Really do what we need to do, I'm sorry, I'm just talking, Councilman Johnstone, did you wanna say something?
Uh, yes, thank you, so. Ken, I think this is great, I'm I'm looking at all of the the intersections and the high traffic and and safety, right? And then I think back to all the constituents that have come before us, there's one thing. That is sticking in the back of my mind is is the dumping, right, we've had this ongoing problem. So, to Councilwoman Hoski's point, I'm sitting here going. If we were to vote on it right now, I would be an immediate yes of, Ken, here's another half a million dollars. Really pinpoint these hotspots, so we're ahead of, we're ahead of the game, we're not just doing the base level, we're ahead of the game, but that's just my opinion, but.
But but to that point, here's what's gonna happen, I'm gonna get all the facts and figures together, I'm gonna get the architect of this thing to educate me. I'm gonna come back to the council and say, listen, for another hundred thousand dollars, we could shoot marginal drive. For another fifty thousand dollars, we could shoot behind stocks, I'm just making that up, okay? Uh, and those will be decisions that you guys, as a council, can make. Thank you.
I'm a little confused, uh, I've been down ERS. It's not funny. Um, I've been being down ERS many, many times, and they used to have cameras that watched the shore, what happened to the cameras down there that were on fiber optics? They shot, they worked, they don't work?
Nineteen eighty-two, the gerbils died, they were making them work.
Chief, the, um, uh, they're telling me that these cameras have a six-year lifespan on the water.
Alright, but I, we do have wifi down there, I know that.
Uh, uh, again, I I I hear that from you, then someone tells me it's not compatible, then someone tells, oh no, we're using wifi, it's a mess, you know? I I need to really get an engineer in here to do discovery, tell me what we really have without the emotions I'm getting from various people. And give you a real answer. I didn't say council people, I didn't say council people.
No.
Alright, so, you didn't hand out these, you said these are the PD gave us these camera locations, correct?
Yes.
That, this is what they're looking to do with it, the money?
That that's their wish list, I don't know how viable it is, maybe eighty percent of that happens, maybe a hundred percent, don't know yet.
Alright, and the other thing was, now, monitoring, if I know originally we were talking about, they won't be able to monitor them. They can just go to get the tape if there's something happening.
It's gotta be, whatever we do is gotta be a monitoring situation.
Okay, so they are looking now to.
Well, it it's a recommendation, I mean, listen, I I have camera systems. And if you have to sacrifice a few cameras for live monitoring, that's what you do, I mean, you need live monitoring. Yeah.
And right now, it's only based on the boardwalk, is that what we're talking about?
No, we can go further than that, but I don't know how far the million's gonna go.
Okay.
And I've got to, I, listen, you could spend millions and millions, right?
Yeah.
What I wanna do is get all the correct answers, do the discovery, get a third party involved to design it, and then come back and give you where where the cameras are going.
Alright, thank you.
Um, and.
I do have a question. Um. It's not related to this, but it's related to, um, the PD, I'm just wondering, is there some way to get some extra money to like. Put aside for the chief, uh, chief perno, so that if he wants some sort of part-time help, uh, over the. The summer with, uh, parking issues, or, um. You know, maybe for two years, we could get this little bucket of money, where he could hire whoever he wants to hire. To help along the shoreline, cuz we we have a really serious issue on the shoreline, I mean, is that something we could even do?
I think quality of life, yeah.
So, it could, it would go under, it would have to come out of reserves, the two fifty reserves you see here, on discretionary, on your chart, it would have to come out of there.
Okay, that's something that I would, I would like the council to consider. Cuz we 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 really do have a very serious issue.
I would need to know price and.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. I don't know if we can talk about that right now, but I kinda, I agree with her, and I mean, I don't know what other municipalities are doing. And I know this is gonna sound, um, you know, I spoke to, you know, Park and Rec last year about hiring. What, um, I can't think of what they're called, the people that, constables to go into, and can you, you might have heard of that conversation. When, when, um, the Board of Ed actually had teachers staying at the playgrounds at the schools after school. To help work some of the stuff that was going on, and I said, well, why can't we get constables down at the, um. Playground camps, just to keep an eye, just to kinda be there to encourage game playing and things of that nature, um. So, I would be very interested in that as well, and I mean, I don't know, you know, do we hire. Retired police officers to kinda go down there, and I don't know, but I agree with you.
You 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 would have to, uh, go to the chief and get a proposal, and we'd have to take it from there.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I could offer in regards to that is that, we used to have park rangers, right, constables, that used to. Go around to the parks and make sure everything was appropriate, um, we used to have, a few years ago, um, retired police officers. Patrol on the beaches, um, I believe that's still allowable in the union contract, but you have to make sure that. You know, number one, it fits within the police department's mission, that it fits within the union contract, and I know that. Listen, I think it's 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 a year plus, we've asked, um, corp counsel to look at, you know, parking, and outsource a parking. Company to come and help us on the shorefront, and I know that, I understand it's kinda working its way through, but at some point, we're gonna see a proposal from. Um, outsourced company to help us at least with, you know, maintaining the lots and and parking, so, um. I think all those things are possible, I just think it really needs, it, the chief needs to to tell us what what he needs.
Sure.
So, if you can bring that, like, we are, we are, I mean, I I'm tickled pink, cuz it was it was something that I. Um, I think, did I talk to you about as far as like having those constables in different areas, I mean, I know. Our police force is stretched so thin, that's why I was a little bit extra last week, is that. I just, I want to help them, they deserve us. Any other, I am just, I want it to be a resounding yes on this motion, so I'd like to. Did I make the motion to bring this out favorably? I appreciate that. Yes.
Just, I would just.
Wanna add a half a million?
No, I would just like to ask that the last sentence be removed, the project will fund. Cameras at thirty-nine locations as delineated in Schedule A attached, which I don't, I don't think we know that they're thirty-nine, and I don't.
Um, you want me to read it? I can read if you like. I think, resolve that city council hereby appropriates funding for the following project. Community protection and traffic monitoring, cameraing network in the amount of one million dollars. This project is approved to help address street crime, trafficking, congestion, monitoring. And to provide technical advantages to aid law enforcement in forensic capture of events, remote monitoring. And viewing of events by all the emergency services. And to address police staff shortage concerns that were exasperated by the pandemic. Roll call vote?
Roll call.
Councilman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bridget Hoski? Yes. Councilwoman Nellie Garthwait?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Acrovali? Yes. Councilman Mitchell Galagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone?
Yes.
And Chairman Rudy Mazzaro?
Yes.
Eight twenty.
Eight twenty, I don't know what it is.
I have, um, I don't have the bandwidth in my mind to even talk about this. I think this should be tabled, and that we can discuss at a later time, I, it is, yes. But I'm excited about the painter field house, let's go, Ken. Oh, I can't.
Does anybody have an idea what they're aiming at, with the first responders relief, I mean, what is this?
Well, I'll just tell you quickly, so, it it is a lot here, bottom line, it's money for tutoring. Of city officials and first responders' kids. Um. They're, they come from microgans not to exceed a thousand dollars. And also for health issues, uh, behavioral health, health issues. Now, this would not be run by the city or the ARPA, uh, committee. It would be run by, um, the unions of these, um, organizations.
Um, so, did did you wanna discuss this, cuz I I'm ready to like have my way with it, or we could just table it.
Can I give you the background?
We're gonna, I, we're we're not helping the most vulnerable in our city. The 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 people who have no healthcare, who have no access to resources. I am literally, I cannot believe that we are literally saying first responders and city employees.
I just wanna give an explanation with it, cuz I didn't understand.
No, I know you don't, but I just, I, chairman, I'm just saying, like, where I am, and the people who are struggling in this city, I just can't. I I know, I can name ten families that could use some tutoring and some help. So, can we go to the, are we, are you comfortable with moving to the painter house, field house?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go to eight twenty-one.
Okay, I appreciate that. It's gonna be held.
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 Alright. Eight twenty-one, I'm so excited.
Alright, so as it stands right now, we, you know, Painter Park is a mess, right? Needs to be cleaned up. Um, this ask would get us a Butler Building. Which would have an indoor sports complex, if you will, but we're chasing other money, two and a half times this. And if we combine the two, we can give you something much bigger and better.
So, when you say bigger and better, do you mean build a building, or we're still gonna go with a Butler Building?
We don't know until we see the, um, final, you know, bids come in, but the idea would be build a building.
Okay.
Yeah.
On that same location?
The location is gonna be subject to, um, a geotech survey, all kinds of things. No one can answer that question with all honesty, somewhere.
Oh, no, I'm just, so you could put a Butler Building where you're gonna, where it's gonna be on that softball field?
Well, we're still subject to, um, the geotech and the and the land stuff, yeah.
Wasn't a go.
Well, we, we haven't done the test yet, the the million dollars would allow us to do those tests. Appoint one of the architects, the ARPA committee has already put out to bid. And through that design process, there'd be weekly or bi, you know, bi-monthly meetings, they'd say, Ken. We discovered that the soil's not suitable, put it here, we have to put it over here, I, we don't know, or they may say, we hit ledge, and this is where you gotta put it. The 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 bottom line is, the million dollars would, at the very least, get us a Butler Building somewhere on that property. And combined with other funds could give us something much better.
Do you have a map of that property, because I don't know if anyone else actually knows, like, how many acres? Where does this start, like, it starts, so it starts well before, um, the playground, all those trees are part of. Painter Park.
But it's right up to, in fact, you know, depending how you look at it, the ice rink is basically on Painter Park property, just, okay? And then, there's a path that walks up to the defunct softball field. And then you take a left, and you have six tennis courts that are unusable. That that, and and that's the area, which is not far from the buildings that, you know, that house people who manage that property. It's not far from that, so that'd probably be an ideal location.
Okay, so I have a question, so when you say the defunct softball field.
Yep.
Is it defunct because it's just a mess? Or is that the defunct because I believe the softball field is being utilized by the softball team sometimes? From West Haven High School, they go there, or is there another one there that they're using, and I don't know what one that is?
So, the the West Haven, um, tennis players were using the tennis courts, uh, because we didn't have six tennis courts. We now have six tennis courts that are brand new, so they're not using that anymore. I don't know that the softball field is being used for any organized sports, I looked at it, it looked pretty.
There was the softball, there was the JV softball team was using a softball field app, no, and I'm just saying.
The lower one.
It must be, yeah, so it is that one we're, I don't know, is there two back there, I don't go all the way back, so I don't know.
The one I'm talking about, butts the rink.
Okay.
Yeah.
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 Okay, cuz I know that, so I just, if we're part of this million dollars, Ken, and I don't know if we can. If we're not gonna build on that softball field, I would like for it to at least be rejuvenated. And made to be like an actual, because I've heard horror stories about the girls playing down there, and it's just a mess.
Well, we we, you're gonna have before you the months to come, and and you may not be as calm as you are now, we'll talk about that later. Uh, we are putting turf on the softball field at the high school. And we're doing infield and outfield, that will be the place to play, and that will solve all the drainage issues.
No, I think the JV team goes there and uses that softball field at Painter Park when there's double practices. You know, that varsity play, they're practicing, they go to that one to practice.
Could be.
And I'm just saying that when you look at the parks and you're doing all of that, it would be great if Painter Park could get rejuvenated. I mean, I would, I would love for weeds to grow where, I would love a grass to grow where we have whole.
I I I envisioned me coming back to you on most of these motions and saying, uh, council, here's the real story. We have to pivot to this, what do you wanna do, I I mean, it's very difficult at this high level before any. Architecture's been done, any study's been done to try and make these predictions, um, but there's gonna be more decisions that you're gonna have to make about each job as we go.
No, that's great, um, so I'm I'm excited, cuz I just. Anyone else have questions regarding?
Forty-five acres is your answer.
A painter park?
Yeah. So, it's from the hockey rink all the way to painter drive.
Right, wow. How much is it is usable, like, how much is it being, how much of it is just, it's still in its natural state, I don't know.
We we think the whole forty-five acres is unutilized, to be honest with you, but, just hopefully this changes.
Councilman?
Thank you. So, Ken, when we talk about a painter park field house, like, you know, if it all went. You know, to be expected, what what are we, what size building are we talking about putting up, what?
You you might get five thousand square feet out of it. Out of a million dollars.
Five thousand square feet, is that what you're looking for?
Well, if we only have a million, if we only have a million, the five thousand would do the job, but if we have access to another two and a half million, then it's a game changer.
Okay, and what will this specifically be used for?
It'd be, in- indoor sports, um.
So, uh, quoting Mark Payne, it's it's, um, a pickleball court that. It has a universal turf floor that could be used for indoor tennis, indoor soccer, depending on how big you can make the building.
Some, maybe some lacrosse.
Batting practice, lacrosse practice, yoga classes, dance classes. Uh, looking for a place when they have the summer camps at the school to be able to have a place for kids to retreat, right now, we get bad weather, they have to cancel. At least they'd be able to go indoors. Um, they're they're saying there's no place to for active shooter retreat, if they have activities there, this would give them a. Retreat building, this is what they asked for.
And Ken, with today's prices, like, for a million bucks with a steel-type building, you can't, it couldn't be any bigger, we don't know until it goes out to bid.
Uh, we don't know until it goes out to bid, but my suspicion is you're not gonna get much larger than five thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you.
When will you know about that other two and a half times?
August.
Really, Ken, sometimes you impress me.
Just sometimes?
No, I'm teasing, um, no, most, lots of times. Councilman?
Um, this, and I'm I'm.
I'm sorry, thank you.
I reported on it.
Oh, I didn't, so it's a grant, I apologize, thank you, Doug, that's fantastic. Wow, that's amazing.
Uh, so I am definitely for this project going forward, and again, if we can. Get that grant to make a bigger building, absolutely would be great. get that grant to make a bigger building, absolutely would be great. Uh, is it also, and I don't know if you would be able to answer, and maybe this is something Mark Payne would be able to answer, but would that be like, is that for the general public as well? Or is that specifically something you gotta call Park Rec and rent out, correct?
I, I, your second statement's probably more true, but I don't know for sure.
Alright, yeah. When that comes up, we'll be dealing with Mark.
So when we do this, I have another question, cause you, I'm all about sustainability and all of that, so when, if we were to just bring in a Butler building, can you do all those things that we, you know, that you, we discussed prior? You know, have the solar panels, have the heating sources and you, the, hey, what are they called? You know, the gas that you put on the high school? Would you do all of that same stuff for this building?
A- a- any opportunity for, uh, green energy on everything we do is always at the forefront. And, and you know, years ago, it was something that you did as an extra. Now it's pretty standard.
Okay. No, no, I just think it's really important that people know that, that, you know, it's, oh, it's gonna cost so much. Well, no, not if we do all these things, it can really just sustain itself.
I don't know if it'd go that far, but it would certainly, yeah.
Right. I mean, more so than what's going on right now.
Right.
I appreciate that. Um, anyone else have any questions? Oh, councilman?
Ken, is it possible, and I, and I'm huge sports background, I love this. I've been waiting for this my whole life, practically for something to be there. Can we get roughly a guideline, just like a possible community center? The cost, because there's gonna be maintenance involved. And we're probably gonna have to have some staff and I know Mark Payne's overwhelmed as it is. And if there's rentals going on, you're gonna have to have people supervising it. You know, you're probably gonna have to have security and all those bells and whistles. So is there a way we could put that in there as well when you start to map this out?
Well, I, I think, um, what's gonna happen is this is the capital expense to build the building, right? You're gonna have to increase your operating expense to maintain the building. And that's a discussion that Park Rec is gonna have to have with you guys and he does his budget.
And we gave him a second, like, we gave him another at administrative assistant to help with. So, I mean. Any other questions?
Uh, Ken, I just have a quick question. Um, first I'm gonna say I'm excited about this project because the kids will have someplace to go. When it rains, I talked to Mark Payne about this. Um, I'm just curious, do you have an architect yet?
So we have four architects that we went out and we got bids from after an RFQ process. And the ARPA committee is using that pool of architects to assign to each project as we go.
Okay, okay. Is there a list of those?
Uh, yeah, in fact, uh, you have the list, I think, last night, but I did bring it with me tonight. And that list of architects. Okay, the first one is Russell and Dawson. They're out of, uh, East Hartford. The second one is Hoffman Architects. They, they got several offices around the country. But I think they're in, um, Hampton is their local office, if I'm correct. Or Raridan Architects is out of Derby. And Antonazi is out of Bridgeport. Those are the four. So we had an RFQ process, we got a lot of submissions. We, uh, weighed all the various, uh, submissions, came up with the four best and the, I, the feeling was that these four firms had the assets to do what we wanted them to do. Um, some being larger than others, um, which would match the, you know, the appropriate job. Um, and then we asked those four for pricing and now we're working off of their pricing and we're assigning an architect to each project.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I want you to approve.
So resolve, the city council hereby appropriates funding for the following project, Painter Park Field House, one million dollars. This project is authorized to develop plans, specifications and bid documents for a proposed field house athletic facility at Painter Park. Upon development of a construction plan and cost estimates, a final budget proposal and design shall be presented to the council for authorization prior to construction activities.
Roll call.
Councilman Gary Donovan.
Yes.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Melli Garthwaite.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Acrobally.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano.
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno.
Yes.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Yes.
And Chairman Peter Mazzaro.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. So A twenty-two, um, I want to discuss, I think that the sports camp grant fund for a hundred thousand dollars is just, I don't like that idea. I would like for the council to entertain creating a grant fund of a hundred thousand dollars to assist families in the city based on income to allow their children to attend camps. Um, there's tons of children who cannot go to Painter Park camp because their family can't support it. I mean, can't, can't afford it. So if, and if we are so inclined, I'd like for us to discuss that in lieu of it just being for sports, it, it can be, if a child wants to attain an arts camp or a dance camp or just something that, that family come up with an application process, whoever, however they're gonna do it. I'm not really sure, Ken, but I just think that.
You know, you bring up a great, uh, concept. I'll tell you, I'll tell you this. I know during COVID, we paid for every camp.
Right.
And, and instead of a process, a lot of money, a hundred thousand, you could fund the entire camp for two years for everybody.
My concern with that is, um, the people who can't afford to camp, to go to camp, didn't sign up to get that free camp. They didn't go. The parents didn't know. So literally, and, and I'm just gonna paint this picture for you. Parents literally paid for the camp. Their, their kid was going to that camp at Painter Park. They got refunds. They got twelve hundred dollars back of their pocket that they already paid. But the parents who are struggling, whose kids are out there, not going anywhere, didn't even know.
So an income-based, uh, micro grant to pay for camp?
To pay, right. And, and I think that, you know, we, of course, West Haven residents, um, and the West Haven. And I'll say, and, and you know what, and, and I, I, should it be a West Haven camp? I don't know. I mean, I don't know how broad our camp is. You know, I know that there's a West Haven softball camp right now, right? You could go for three days for seventy-five dollars for kids who probably might need the help camp go. Cause their parents don't have the extra money, so.
Here's what happens, uh, you know, my girls are into lacrosse. We go down to Yale, there's a camp there. It's a great camp. Um, I, I think it should really be a regional camp, yeah. A West Haven resident, a- any camp.
There should be a cap.
I think there should be a ca- a monetary ca- cap, right? You wanna go to a, you know, an eco camp somewhere. That's eight hundred dollars or something, you know what I mean? It needs to be a cap.
You know, maybe what you should do is approve the hundred thousand with the stipulation that we have to come back and give you a plan.
No, and, 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 right, and I mean, I, I really think that, you know, income base for the next two years. I mean, I think that just would be fantastic, cause then you're helping people who really need assistance in my, that's just my opinion. I, I, I'll put it up to the council, uh, their thoughts.
We, we don't wanna get in trouble by not defining the, the, you know, parameters of this thing, so.
Correct, correct. But a- as coun- as Councilman Quagliani said, we don't want somebody coming in saying, I wanna go to, you know, horse riding camp in Massachusetts, it's ten thousand dollars and we're writing you a check. You know, I, I.
You're gonna put a cap on it.
I don't know, I, I'll, I'll leave it, leave it open. Does anyone have any thoughts? Anyone? Questions, thoughts to? No, most of it, I just wanna get a consensus. I mean, are we?
I, I'm gonna, I, I, I think it's a great idea. I would just like to make sure it's outlined as for, for West Haven and for West Haven camps if we would, right? It's not, I don't wanna get into horseback riding that's taking place somewhere else. I just want it to be based in West Haven for West Haven's children. No matter what.
The soccer camps are on the boulevard, the lacrosse camps are in Yale, the baseball camps are just over the line. You know, I think if you give us a day to think about this, i- i- you know, we, we can come back to you and say, here are the parameters. And I think by capping the amount of money, um, talking about multiple kids have to participate in the camp. It can't just be a one-off where, you know, kid goes Vermont or something.
Right, I mean, I think, yeah, like, I, I think there has to be some type of, and, and I will say this. There is a, um, hmm, I, I would wanna say that you need to be a student in the city of West Haven, right? Or, or ha- a resident, but you know, what's the age range? Like, but you have people with, um, particular. I am so sorry, councilman.
You're, you're good. And I agree with what you just said, or with that, it would have to be.
Yeah, I, and I also think that, you know, you think ki- kids go to camp eighteen years or younger, but we, we do have people in our city where they, um, are still twenty-one going to maybe Aces that would benefit from specialized camps. Right, um, so I don't know how you would, I mean, you know, I don't want, you know, my daughter's gonna be eighteen, she's like, oh, I'm gonna go to camp, I'm gonna go to horse riding camp. I'm gonna, yeah, I, I'm just saying that I, I think it, how we need to do it, there needs to be some type of to open it up to people who would still fall within that, their parents would send them, you know, for extra help and things of that nature. Did I?
Yes, of course. There's a whole, there's also the whole issue of actually getting the money to the camp.
Correct.
We, so the city's gotta cut a check. I mean, you, the city could be cutting two thousand doll- two thousand checks from this bucket of money. You know, it's, we gotta think about all that.
Yep, I'm comfortable with that.
You know, it might be.
Cut a lot of checks over the years.
It might be a voucher system, where the city writes a voucher and the camp gets paid at the end or something, I don't know.
Yeah, no, no, and that's fine. I just think, I just think, I, I'd be more comfortable with it being need-based and people being able to. Anyone?
I did, but basically he answered what I was gonna ask anyways, or, or put in, so. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, councilman?
To several people's points, West Haven resident, yes. And to the point of, it's, where do you expand the horizon of it? Keep in mind that certain towns neighboring us have certain special facilities that we don't have.
Correct.
So like, for example, because I'm in that world all the time, in Hampton, you have Jenga soccer that has their own soccer facility. Indoor heated, air-conditioned, nets, all the supplies there. You have the Milford, if our Bennett rink is booked, we have the Milford Ice Pavilion. So I think, you know, we set a limit, it's a West Haven resident, we figure out the voucher system, how we're gonna do that. And I think to eliminate the bookkeeping disaster, if we get some type of minimum signups of, of, you know, we don't want people taking advantage of it, but we want the kids to have the experience that they, that they deserve because of COVID. So do we set a cap on how many you can sign up for? And, you know what I mean? The, the, you know, I'm just kinda throwing that out there, but.
I, I also think to your, uh, concept, I think New Haven County could be the geographical area.
Pretty much, yes.
Yeah.
But I, I agree with it. I think it's, um, if we work out the details, I think this could be very beneficial for our kids, so that's a lot.
And how many kids per family?
Yep, thank you.
Camps are starting now, right? So you need to.
I, I, yeah, I, I, I.
Kinda get this.
Yeah, if you approve this, I'll have something for you soon. I may even email to you or something, but we'll get something to you.
Yeah, cause I know camps have already started and some are going to start, so I know we can't really wait on.
Yeah, and, 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 and you're right, I mean, especially the need-based, they're probably not signing up. I'm just, but yeah.
Ken, I, I mean, so just administratively, I, so, I mean, there's gotta be some entity that handles this, right? I mean, you can't, because you can't rely on, you know, the, the people to go to the camp and then the camp has to contact somebody to get the reimbursement or the, uh, there's, I don't, I don't know if it's somebody within, you know, the city, if it's, if it's, I, I don't know, I don't wanna name a department, but somebody has to oversee this.
Ron, it may be a third party that you give five percent to and they handle the whole thing, I don't know. And because, I'm telling you, this is a bookkeeping nightmare.
Right.
And I can see this coming, I mean, we have, we, we're understaffed now in the finance department. This would, may just tip them right over the edge.
Well, and based on, you know, history, I don't, I don't want them writing more checks.
Right.
You know, you know what I'm saying? I think they got enough to, to manage without having to, to write more checks. So I think, as you come back to us, I think, you, you know, who's gonna be that administrator re- recommendation I think is important.
Okay.
Maybe CDA.
Still gotta cut checks out of the city, though. Would be ideal is if you contacted a third party and they gave a credit card. And we reimburse them for the credit card, based on all these parameters.
Chairman?
Ken, isn't the ARPA committee hiring an accountant?
Yes.
Would he be a person to do something like this?
Not at four hundred bucks an hour, buddy.
Huh?
Not at four hundred bucks an hour.
Oh, no, okay, forget about that.
I don't know if it's that high, but it's, it's too expensive, yeah. But, but I think, I really think there's third parties out there through, you know, that you can, you can contact and make us have. I'll get back to that.
No, we're gonna approve it. Yes. So I'd like, um, that I do that? Oh, yes, I did. Did I do make a motion? I didn't make a motion. My apologies. I'd like to motion, I'd make a motion to bring this out favorably, the camp grant fund of a hundred thousand dollars. Thank you. So resolve that the city council hereby appropriates funding for the following project. The camp grant fund of a hundred thousand dollars that is income-based and that you will bring back a business plan as such to the council. Thank you so.
Thank you.
Chairman, roll call vote, please. Councilman Gary Donovan.
Yes.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Melli Garthwaite.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Acrobally.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano.
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno.
Yes.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Yes.
And Chairman Peter Mazzaro.
Yes.
Eight twenty-three, Ken?
Eight twenty-three. So my understanding on this one is this is a safety net for, work we're doing as a result of COVID that could backfill those expenses. For example, we spent about a hundred and eighty thousand on EOC, mostly computers and things like that. There's a grant out there that says you spend the money first and apply for a grant. If we don't get it, this money could be available for that. What we don't wanna do is burden the taxpayer with those charges. Um, we'd rather it come out of ARPA money that's qualified ARPA money. So this is a safety net for all that. And, and this will be spent with me coming to you and saying, I'm taking, I need fifty out of here, I need twenty-five out of here. You know, I'll explain it on each case-by-case basis. And it'll take two years to spend it, but we wanna have a safety net so we're not, you know, having an issue paying bills.
Councilman?
Thank you. Ken, I, I gotta tell you, um, I'm not, I don't wanna, I know I'm not allowed to jump around, but I'm not comfortable with twenty-three or twenty-four. So, um, wanna put that out there now. I, I would need to, to have this explained to me a little clearer to, on how this would work. And thank you for allowing me to, to, to jump in there when we did.
So do you wanna, do you have any specific questions or do you feel like, you wanna have just ask Ken to elaborate a little bit more?
Sure, so we'll stick on eight twenty-three, of course.
Okay.
But, um, yes.
With, with your permission, I'm just gonna have Doug kinda speak to it a little bit. He, he knows his part, it's, it's tied into the grants, if you don't mind, Doug.
Yeah, so, as you know, there were a lot of grants that went to the health department directly. And there are absolutely not, the mayor wanted me to be clear, absolutely not including anything to do with the mismanaged funds that Michael, uh, was involved with.
Allegedly.
Yes, for the record, allegedly. Uh, so we don't know. Anytime in the next several years, an audit could produce an invoice that says that wasn't qualified. So that in the FEMA PA accounts, you have to spend the money first and then submit your bills. They have a couple of years to claw that back as well. So, this is an ask for a reservation of funds and contingency, in case that happens, your budget doesn't get hit.
Do you wanna go? So, how can we do that, though, how can we, how can we do that past the two years, or we can? You can't, so this would just be two two years, but let me just say, so what you're saying. I just want everyone to be clear, at the third year, when all said is done, can't they do the same thing? No, I'm talking about if they come and say that wasn't the right funding. Okay, I just wanted to be sure that we recognize that.
In the next two years, if anything comes back, you'd have a way to pay for it, and if and if we don't spend the money on so- on that, then you've got a contingency for other things.
So isn't. So isn't this money that would be sitting there collecting interest? No?
Not, not a lot.
We keep it and we don't have to spend it by the time?
No, the 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 interest is ours to keep, we don't have to follow any rules, or it's just ours, period.
Well, we we do follow the rules, we just don't follow treasury rules.
No, no, I I, no, I I appreciate you letting me know that, cause I I have always been curious, cause I know we are collecting interest and I am all about.
But they put it into that, I can't remember the acronym, they put it into the the state or reserve pool. For your your general fund flow, it's it's, it's like one point six five percent, inflation's at nine, I mean, it's not.
I I know, I'm just curious, that's all, I tend to be curious.
So this says that this would be made, this is a contingent backup for legitimate and legal expenditures made by the city during COVID nineteen emergency. That are rejected from other funding sources, now I'm gonna, I'm gonna consider, even though we're still in COVID, the COVID emergency we're probably talking about. Is twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, so. There are projects or programs that were legitimate, likely, and legal. But they weren't funded by the CARES Act, right, for example, so maybe the health department had programs that you, that. Vaccination clinic, right, that wasn't funded by the CARES Act. Would that be an expense that goes here?
The the CARES Act money that was given out without much oversight and rules and money was spent rapidly, that's what we're concerned about. If somebody's gonna say, you didn't have the right backup for that invoice. You saw what happened in the COVID residential audit, well, that could happen to other grant funds that were rapidly deployed as well, so we just think you should have some reserve, that's.
Listen, I I, so I was hoping you wouldn't say that, because I am adamantly opposed to. Keeping half a million dollars in reserve to bail out departments or individuals that didn't follow the rules. Um, so I I am, you know, I I I was kinda with you at the beginning there where there's. You know, going forward, but, you know, when I saw this, I said, this is an opportunity probably to claw back some of the money. From the CARES Act funds that maybe should have been approved, but for whatever reason, weren't. And I just have trouble with getting a second bite at the apple, so at the end of the day, we all know that. Um, that audit, you know, I I think Mr. Jackson came before us a couple of times and said that they're continuing to have conversations. And continuing to provide backup, and he, he's optimistic that that number of ineligible will be reduced. So I'd like to think that if we have proper documentation on a proper expenditure, then. That will, that will be accepted, so what's left is either improper projects. Or projects that don't have the proper documentation, and to me, to use ARPA funding. When the community could use the half a million dollars for this, is probably my last priority, so if we're gonna vote on it tonight, I'm a no.
So, let me, let me hit you with this, if I may. The the reality of it is, if something comes down the pike, the taxpayer's gonna pay for it, right? If we take this four fifty and you turn it into a reserve mini checkbook. And we come back to you with an explanation why it might be needed. I don't think you're gonna find what you just described, I think you're gonna find legitimate transactions. That the funding source ran out, uh, it was a post, you know, spend grant that we didn't get. And we would like to have a source to go to to bring those bills to you.
But can I get it, but if you were, if you had it, so we we're approving specific projects with the ARPA money. And this particular fund is saying, whatever other stuff is floating in the universe, not something that the council has approved as a. Legitimate ARPA project, you could use this money to to fund it or partially.
No, 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 uh, uh, listen, we we don't, we don't know what's gonna happen in the next two years, okay? We we are fortunate enough that twenty-nine million dollars, we've been able to figure out, and you guys approved most of it. You're gonna wish you had four fifty in the next twenty-four months to go to. To cover expenses that are legitimate, and and the council should, um, treat that as a reserve. In their contingency and dole it out on a case by case basis.
Expenses that are legitimate based on the projects that we approved, or projects that are outside of what we approved?
So something's gonna happen where we're gonna say in eight months, boy, we we didn't think of that one, we wish, we wish we did.
Well, we have a contingency built into this, right?
You 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 have a contingency built in that we're using up in different stuff. And when we go, when we tap into that contingency, we know exactly where it's going, I'm suggesting. There's gonna be surprises coming down, not bad surprises, but surprises, and you should put in a lockbox four fifty and be prepared to pay those bills when they come.
Can't, can't we just, instead of proving it, just put it in the contingency, that extra four fifty, I mean.
You you put, put it in the contingency, but I think when you're talking thirty million dollars, it should go in the contingency and be earmarked for the unknown. Everything we've talked about, we say we know about, it it, we're not.
But we're going into the contingency, if if we, we approved something for one million. You come back, say, you know, it's a million five.
On a known project. What I'm saying is protect four fifty in reserve for things that we don't know about, that are are gonna surprise us going down the pipe.
I get, I understand, but at the same time, what I'm saying is. Now you come back that one million, and you're saying, why, it's less, it's a, it's a hundred thousand, so, I mean, that four fifty, I I just don't know if. And I I kind of agree with Councilman Quagliani is. Why, why do we need to specifically set aside, if we could just put it in regular contingency, it it's there anyway. It's not as though you're using it as an emergency, hey, we need, we got the contingency, let's use it right now, we'll let the council know next. Meeting that we spent it on this, because there's really nothing that's, should be an emergency with the ARPA money.
So what it be?
Right, or no?
Could I just ask, I I think the way I look at it, and tell me if I'm wrong, it's like having two bank accounts, right? Uh, you have one for checking. And then one for something else, like when I tell people, a- and I think that, listening to him further explain is that you have a contingency for projects. That are there, and this is the amount of money you have, this four fifty is for anything that would be a surprise and.
Like an overrun, sorry, like would be an overrun?
Well, it 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 may not be overrun on our projects, there there. There there, there's a big umbrella of COVID spending that is beyond these twenty-five projects.
There could be surprises there, it would end up as a budget burden, so we're just saying, if you earmark this, it's part of your contingency for ARPA. To protect yourself, so you're not scrambling the budget to cover something or or unexpected. And you're gonna have the ability to say yay or nay when that comes before you. But but what's gonna happen is, if you don't protect the four fifty, we're gonna spend it on these projects.
And then eight months later, you're gonna say, gee, I really wish we didn't have to have the taxpayer pay that, it qualified under these. These funds, and we no one thought about it.
We're only talking now COVID related? So give us some examples.
And that's the problem, we we know there's gonna be a surprise coming down the pike, right?
But like, can you get, like, can you allude to, like, just an example, cause? To me, I mean, you're talking about a half a million dollars.
Yes, so the the prime example is the way FEMA public assistance funds work, is they give you the parameters of. Of what you're spending on, if you ask them, is this eligible? And they say, well, if you have to ask, you didn't have to spend the money, so, we're not gonna tell you upfront whether it applies, cause that's not the program, the program is. You had to spend the money, it was an emergency, you spent the money, it qualified under this book and this chapter. Send it to us after you spent the money, we'll reimburse you, that's the way it works.
So we may not have been unauthorized. And we're saying that you may have to use this to cover if it comes back at us at a later date.
So we, we gave. Yes, so we went to FEMA and we gave them the parameters for remodeling the EOC, so we could operate in a COVID environment. They didn't come back and say yes, but they didn't come back and say no, in in our experience, the no really counts with yes as well. Give it a shot, so we, we'll see where it goes, so that's where we're at, but we're at that for a hundred and eighty thousand. We just think you should have some protection, so your budget doesn't get hit if they reject those expenses.
What do you mean we're at for a hundred and eighty thousand? What do you, what do you mean by that?
The Emergency Operations Center renovation is, uh, at around a hundred and eighty thousand. That we're gonna submit to FEMA PA, if they reject it.
There was a hundred and eighty spent. And we're saying that if that got rejected. You'd fold back to this forfeit.
Because otherwise, it would hit your budget.
It it would be, it would become, it would, and it'd be a hole in the budget, and there's other things like that that we don't, we're not thinking of right now, they're gonna surprise us. And we're gonna come to you and say, you know, this project qualifies under ARPA, we'd like to use the four fifty.
I'll give the four back to my chair, but I would be concerned that is this unauthorized use.
It's in the discretionary column, which means it's essentially revenue replacement, no profit tax.
As long as it's a legitimate government expense.
Nothing else going up here, thank you.
I don't know if my question, my question was answered or not, but I'm gonna shoot this out. This four, half a million dollars, can it be just to cover the money we're spending on ARPA, or because COVID's pa- it's passed theoretically. This is ARPA money, you're talking about the CARES Act money that you spent to do the center. And this is all together, different funds that you're trying to.
It's, it's all CARES Act COVID money, all of that money is under the CARES Act.
Including the ARPA money?
ARPA's under it, SLFRRF is under it, the 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 money that the health department got, that's all part of the CARES Act.
So, why didn't you just leave the money in the contingency fund, when something like this happens, you got it. I don't understand why you have to have this.
We're, we're asking you to keep it in contingency, but earmark it for the unknown, that's what we're asking for. Because I'm gonna come to you with these projects, I'm gonna ask for more money, we're gonna forget about this eight months from now. And this four fifty should be there to protect against the budget hole.
You also need to reserve that discretionary column, because you bump it up on the total. So we don't want you to, we don't, we don't want other discretionary funds spent and then make it not, not in the discretionary column. You're not spending any money tonight, you're just holding it aside.
So Doug, in your, uh, in your tenure, how many projects have fallen into the category where. You anticipated it to be covered by FEMA and it wasn't?
Well, before my time, they have, they still have Sandy projects that are still being clawed back on, so there's. Can't quote exactly, but I believe it was between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars of Sandy. Bills submitted that we didn't have a backup for, and they got rejected five years after the fact.
So you mentioned your concern about, you mentioned the ELC, so the ELC. Must, I would imagine that's a renovation project that you took on based on receiving FEMA funding. And so how did you fund it if we didn't have the FEMA funding yet?
We, we was, we got FEMA guidance that it's an eligible activity, so we wrote up the, um. The narrative for it, and we sent it to them for review, you don't get a yes or a no on those reviews, you'll get a no for sure. But you never get a yes.
So did you do the project? So how did you pay for the project if we didn't get the FEMA money?
It's paid for on a cash flow. When we do a project on any grant, we pay for it upfront and we seek reimbursement.
And that one must have came to us, right, we have to approve all grants first, right, did that come to the council?
No, you don't approve all grants. It's approved by Mr. Siplinski, I have an email approving it.
I get it, but I think I have the fiscal restraint in order to understand that if I put something in contingency. I'm gonna think very seriously before I take it out of contingency, so we don't run into a problem, so. I just don't feel, I don't like the earmark for for CARES Act related expenses. I would prefer, me personally, that that four fifty goes in contingency, cause what we're doing right now. Or that we wait, we still have other proposals, some that aren't even in the mayor's recommended plan that we need to. We need to discuss and and locking in that four fifty, um, may put other proposals in jeopardy, so. I'm I'm not, I'm not.
There's another level here, if you, if you lock it into the discretionary column. It does the same thing, the the problem is that none of this will qualify if it comes out of discretionary. So it's, it's gotta stay within that ten million dollars.
So if you keep four fifty in contingency on that discretionary column, it does the same thing we're asking for without having to do what we're asking for.
So we could have contingency on two lines, is that what you're saying? And then anything coming out of that contingency, whatever, whichever one it is, has to come to us for approval first.
It's your checkbook, yeah.
Yeah, I would just prefer more general, but that's just me, thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm changing this to. Are we going to change this to say discretionary? I mean, what you're saying, it makes sense to me. If we go to discretionary contingency, instead of, is that what you were also saying, right? So that, again, it's like two checkbooks is what you were saying, right, but one of them is for.
Do you wanna say something?
Just in case.
You really can just kill it, it sits in contingency, and then in your minds, you just have to remember. So you could just not act on the motion, it stays in contingency.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, you can't spend that money unless it comes to us first anyways. We're gonna know where it goes.
Is this a motion to deny?
Motion to deny. No, second it.
So it's made by Hosky, seconded by Bruno. Councilman Gary Donovan? A a motion to deny? A yes to to deny, a no to not deny.
Correct, so it is a yes to.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani? Councilwoman Bridget Hosky? Councilwoman Meli Garthwaite? Councilwoman Sarah Acquaballe? Councilman Mitchell Gallinano? Councilman Robert Bruno? Councilman Stephen Johnstone? And Chairman Peter Mazzaro? Do you wanna talk about eight twenty-four?
Yes, um, so as the council knows, we approved three hundred thousand dollars for professional fees. Part of that was for an attorney, the other part was to hire an accounting firm, okay?
And a lawyer?
An attorney.
Attorney, a lawyer, and what was the other one?
No, attorney is a lawyer.
No, I know, a ter- the attorney lawyer, the accounting, and then the engineer, I thought.
Well, the architects. What's happening is the the, each individual bucket of money for the projects will pay for the architects.
Oh, got it, got it, got it.
So, we put out a a pretty extensive RFP to ask an accounting firm to come in and work with us. Only one firm responded, U U H Y. We put it out again, advertised it in more papers, the same firm responded again. And in their proposal, they have two buckets of money, they have up to two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, to work with ARPA, um, based on what we request, and they have all kinds of stuff, some of it we don't need, but they talk about. Uh, reporting, they talk about doing all the accounting, they talk about, um, you know, all the spreadsheets, the website. Attending all the meetings, um, all that's in there. Um all that's in there. But what they're saying is that they wanna go back and they want to answer the Cohen Resnick audit. They want to get the money that's due to the city that was denied. They wanna access and monitor the existing procedures over statements of financial interests required to be submitted by all city officers, employees and officials, whether elected or appointed, paid or unpaid. Ensure that such conflicts of interest are considered in the approval of the projects funded by ARPA. Monitoring of uh such conflicts of interest should be conducted by the Board of Ethics to be influenced by the city. And they have a whole thing here about coming in, working with the Finance Department uh and straightening out the um mess that was there, okay? So I said, wait a minute, we didn't ask for that. And they said, Ken, you don't understand. No firms come in to you unless they do both. You have, if you want us to work at ARPA, we need to straighten out the mess that you have. And they have earmarked a hundred and forty-four thousand for that activity.
Can we just discuss something really quickly before you come get involved? So my understanding, Chairman, sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman, um is the attorney we hired doing the investigation to determine if we did, if everything was on the up and up? Is that somehow different? Does it what than what this company is now offering to do? Like, we think it's different.
Uh the attorney we hired is gonna investigate the Cohen Resnick audit, which reason being the information did they not receive? Why didn't they re- receive that information and the legality of the audit, like you stated? What Ken's saying that these outfits gonna stay in the, uh what I understand, if I am on the s- steward right, are gonna watch what's going on in the Finance Department.
Let let me read one more paragraph to you. We have previously provided you with our qualifications to serve as your ARPA compliance monitor. As we've previ- previously indicated in our response, we are aware of the report that was recently presented to uh Connecticut Office Policy Management, O P M, by Cohen Resnick related to the allegations of misuse of the uh coronavirus relief funds. We've also reviewed the related O P M draft recommendations. We believe that it is imperative that prior to beginning significant spending of your ARPA funds, that you implement immediately the corrective action plan to address the weaknesses identified by the Cohen Resnick report and by O P M. Minimum corrective action necessary included. You got a whole list of things they would come in and do. I don't think we can get an accounting firm in here unless we offer them that piece of the pie.
I don't think we can, we can make that. So I get it, and that's great, but but they really need to ha- have that discussion with with the city. With the mayor and the and the director of finances.
She did. She she approved it. What we're saying is, the reason we're here tonight, is you've got three hundred thousand earmarked uh for these soft costs. Uh we're asking that to move up to seven hundred thousand. And that would um give us the money to pay for these two buckets. And 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 they're telling me they're making it very clear. It's all covered under ARPA. And the exact words they said was any strengthening of internal spending policies are covered under ARPA. I can't do it for three hundred thousand. That's my problem.
Oh, I understand.
And I think they're gonna get back a significant amount that was already denied. The these guys are no joke. The these guys are, you know, they are the forefront on on this ARPA spending. They they have offices all over the country. They they don't mess around. And if you remember, they're the ones that came in here when Marb first came in. And they did all the reports to Marb because the city was having trouble achieving that. They they were the ones that came in and did all that work.
So Ken, I'm not opposed to that, but I think I I need the Finance Director here to tell us that they're gonna that this is, this is something that the city wants to move forward on because, I mean, we have, you know, we have, we have, we just hired an auditor. Right? We have an attorney doing uh the investigation on it. We have a Finance Director. We have a a a Marb person sitting in the third floor here getting paid. They're talking about bringing in a a financial manager, you know, shortly. So I I I just I need to get my arms around who's doing what and is anything redundant. But I do agree. Listen, from the beginning, that's the first thing that we should do, right? To to move through that, to pu- to reinforce our policies and procedures and determine what's appropriate and not appropriate. I think we all could could probably find some common ground there, but I think I need the Finance Director to see how this all fits together.
So, you know, it's kind of like a chicken and egg thing because we can't find an accounting firm to come in. No one's bidding on it. We don't really feel comfortable moving ahead on any of these expenses unless we have that uh third leg to the stool. And this company says, we're gonna come in, take care of your deficiencies, answer the Cohen Resnick report. And because of that, we're willing to work with you on ARPA. If I don't have these guys, I I don't feel comfortable moving ahead. I mean, I I need an accountant here.
Yeah, I disagree with that. I just like to hear the mayor and the Finance Director say that that this is, this is how we should move and and this is how it all fits together.
Is Scott Jackson still here? Did he leave? I can go look. I don't.
Now, in their proposal, they talk about reporting to you guys um throughout. I think they do. Um that's part of their their proposal here. They also talking about segregation. They wanna sep- open up a separate bank account for ARPA funds. They don't wanna co-mingle funds.
Are there any other questions before Scott comes in if he's here?
So Ken, what you're saying, what you're saying is they're gonna control the ARPA funds too?
Uh they won't ha- have the physical funds, but they're gonna run the checkbook for it. Uh they're they're going to um create the checkbook, the online checkbook. They're going to bless every transaction. They're gonna keep track of the accounting. But while they're doing that, they're also in the Finance Department offering assistance and going after the money that was not approved with the Cohen Resnick report. You you know, you you and you're really, if you had to hire a company just to do that, it'd be much, a lot more money. The fact that you're giving them the ARPA piece of it, the economies of scale is you're paying less for both, one company.
So Ken, you're saying they're gonna manage the complete checkbooks, checks and balances, get back to us on a regular basis on.
Yeah, their their proposal, their their proposal specifically talks about going, coming before the City Council, especially on the first bucket of money, which is the Cohen Resnick report. They'll be dealing with you a lot more than me on that. I mean, that that that's nothing to do with me. Um on the ARPA side, they're gonna keep track of the expenses. They're gonna make sure everything qualifies. They're gonna attend all the meetings. They'll be here with me when I do reporting. You'll be able to ask some questions. They'll attend all the ARPA meetings. And the money will be sitting in a city bank account, but they're gonna have, you know, a virtual copy of the checkbook, so it's total transparency. And and they're claiming, I mean, talking to these guys, they they're whizzes at this stuff. They they literally understand what ARPA covers, what it doesn't cover, what you can and can't do. Um getting into some of these expenses without that support is is difficult. And the mayor is um, I talked to her the other night. Uh she is a hundred percent behind this. She wants them to come in. And I don't think they have a lot of choice because there's no other accounting firm that's even answering the R F Ps. I I think the only reason they're answering it is because they were here before and they already know what's there. I think it's an opportunity to clean up a big mess.
Any other questions?
Uh although I do agree with most of the council members. This might be something that we do need just to to cover our rear ends as well. So I mean, if we we all know, we all don't wanna fall back to what happened previously. And and if there's the price, I I think it's worth it so that we don't have any issues. And we might, who knows, it might find, get some findings out of it where that Cohen Resnick maybe didn't do a thorough enough job out of it, so.
If if I could just share this with you, uh their office is in Farmington. Their current ARPA clients that they have contract with Bristol, Wallingford, Colchester, Meriden, Chelsea, Mass, Tucson, Arizona, uh Chester, Pennsylvania, Upper Darby Township, Pennsylvania, Williamsport, Pennsylvania, Willin- Wilmington, Delaware, that's a big city. Cass County, Missouri, um Claire County, Wisconsin, Chattanooga, Tennessee. Another city in Tennessee I can't pronounce, but um that that's your client list right now on ARPA. The seven hundred, that's their bill. No, 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 they were, no, they're they're claiming that the first part to do the extensive work with Cohen Resnick and to get back your funds is about a hundred and forty-four thousand. Um and they have their hours broken down um as to what they charge for each uh discipline. Um and then the second part, let me just find it here, which is strictly the ARPA money we're talking about uh on this plan is two hundred and ten thousand, I believe. Uh two ten.
So that's not even four hundred. Where's the other three hundred?
Well, I've got this guy here. You guys keep forgetting to pay this guy. So I've got him and I also have some other professional fees, you know, architects and things and, you know.
They were about to say, why are you overcharged? Yes, there's the other stuff. Remember, I was saying lawyer, you said attorney.
I mean, the bottom line is I'm at three fifty. The whole boat, I use every hour here, which I'm not gonna use every hour. I'm at three fifty, right? You've you've given me three hundred. I gotta fit in that budget. These guys. Him and some other professional fees, architects.
Any other questions?
Mr. Jackson here?
No, it's not.
Yeah, can I agree? Listen, I agree. I think it makes sense to do all those things in that order. But I know as the legislative body, it's hard. I I can't, I can't authorize that this, that he and have say that he's, they're going to work with the Finance Department and the Finance Director until the Finance Director says to us, listen, yes, we're 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 gonna work together. We think this makes sense. No sense for me to say yes. And then the and then the Finance Department says, oh, no, we're not working. We're not working with them. We have a plenty of else, other things to do with Marb and this one and that one. So I just want a verification that that it make that this proposal, that the Finance Director is aware of it and and will work with this particular group. And then I think I'm okay. I just, I think I need that piece.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I just let David speak for a second.
Uh one point, the ARPA program, when you look at, you know, what's allowed and what's not allowed, specifically involves this sort of administrative expense. They recognize as a qualified expense, not discretionary. They recognize that this machine isn't gonna run itself. From my perspective as a lawyer, having a accounting firm with day-to-day expertise and, you know, we've got their feet in all sorts of ARPA projects would be a tremendous resource for me, looking at it from an accounting perspective, rather uh combined with the legal perspective. So, you know, when I've hesitated to answer questions absolutely, it's because I wanna talk to get the perspective from people who um have this experience, who have looked at it from an accountant's perspective. And I think, you know, there is also a tremendous amount of regular reporting that is required as the money gets spent. And a lot of their proposal um includes taking care of that regular reporting so that the city is in compliance with whatever they're supposed to do on a weekly, monthly, and so on basis. So there, you know, when I look at that pers- that proposal, I see a tremendous resource uh both going forward and looking backward helping implement corrective actions that were uh very strongly recommended um in prior reports.
Yeah, I mean, I I thought that was. My initial, when I looked at this, I thought we already approved this. Cause I remember way back when, I think Councilwoman Ozzy said, listen, we're not spending a dime of ARPA, but I thought there was a motion back then that said, we're gonna allow you the expenses for an attorney, an accountant, and so forth. So I don't know if we fixed a dollar amount to it back then.
You did. You gave me three hundred thousand. So so here's, here's the problem. I think the mayor's gonna sign this contract, like next week. And it's coming from ARPA funds. And then we don't have the ARPA funds approved. We we be, we're not asking you to approve the contract. We're asking you to give us additional funding in the soft costs, so then the mayor can go out, hire this accounting firm, and we can get this stuff going.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's it's tough to sign a contract that's fifty thousand more than what's been allocated by the council. It's it's not right.
I understand. I I'm in favor of moving along with this. Did you have something you wanted to say?
To to Councilman Quagliani's point is, yes, we're gonna go forward as long as our Finance Department says yes, they're they're going to work with this accountant.
Wi- wi- with all due respect, I I mean, the Finance Department works for the mayor. If she says this team's coming in, they're coming in. The 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 Finance Department does not say yea or nay to this.
I have a bigger motion to approve.
For discussion? No discussion?
Yes, go ahead.
So Ken, how much is the, how, add the two again for me for the.
So I'm at one forty-four.
One forty-four and two ten.
So it's three fifty-four. And then the only other piece that comes out of there is is the attorney, right?
Uh well, the the attorney. Comes out of there, but here's what happens. Um I need room for architects because, I'll just give you an example. If you if I do the uh field house and I spend eighty thousand on an architect and the field house comes back at a billion dollars, I have to back the architect's fee out of this soft cost versus not doing the project. So, you know, so I'll try to pay for the architects out of each project, but if it means doing the project, I'd rather pay the soft cost out of the seven hundred thousand.
We also have the forced labor accounts that we've charged against there as well, project management. We we need seven hundred thousand to make all this work.
So I had the opportunity to listen to the three-hour Marb meeting today. And one of the things, at the very tail end of the meeting, they opined about is is the repeated the re- in their view, the repeated lack of the city sending them contracts for review and approval over fifty thousand dollars. So I would think that this contract would have to go to the Marb for their review and approval.
That that that.
Correct. Nothing, it it's since January one, they've gotten everything.
Yeah, we no- nothing over fifty thousand goes out without going to Marb.
So this would go to Marb?
It has to, yeah, of course. Yeah. Yeah, and and by the way, interesting point in that, we sent the Washington School contracts to Marb. And according to Mr. Spire, Marb said, we're we're not dealing with that. That's already controlled by a state process.
Any other discussion?
So I'll read it. Resolve that the City Council hereby appropriates funding for the following project, CARES Act Financial Management, seven hundred thousand. This fund shall enable the city to engage the necessary legal and financial expertise to effect proper, legal, and transparent management of all CARES Act funds and associated expenditures. Said funds are intended to be sufficient to provide the required monthly reporting to the council, quarterly and final reporting to U S Treasury and daily financial management of the funds until the closure of the ARPA-funded projects.
Councilman Gary Donovan? Councilman Ronald Quagliani? Councilwoman Bridget Hoskey? Councilwoman Melie Garthwaite? Councilwoman Sarah Acquabali? Councilman Mitchell Galagnano? Councilman Robert Bruno? Councilman Stephen Johnstone? And Chairman Peter Mazzaro? Communication A twenty-five, I wanna bring this out favorably.
Most definitely.
You wanna second that?
Um I'll open it up for discussion. I'll go first. I am quite excited and pleased that we're about to vote on this. I think the men and women of our police force are um more than deserving. They they deserve more than what we can offer them. I heard that quite possibly today, uh maybe the Marb was not in favor of this. I don't have confirmation, but I'm that they were not in favor of this and wanted um us to. That they were not in favor of this and wanted um us to not vote for this. But um I am not going to bow down to their perception. That we shouldn't do this, I'm going to stand up and say that. You, they're going to have to say no, they're gonna have to come into this city. And tell the West Haven Police Department that they cannot have this money, there's. Um, ah, no, I shouldn't say that. Um, I, I don't even understand why that would, why that would even be a consideration. So, um, the quote from the finance chair of the city council is that. I am thrilled that we can award this money to our men and women, and I hope we can cut the check. Quickly, anyone else got anything to say?
Yeah, I would like to uh to agree with that one hundred percent, wholeheartedly, the only thing I would like to say with the Marv is that there, there was a ten of. Ten of agreement between the union and the police department that was voted on before we went into tier four. So I would hope that the Marv would be, would be okay with this, and I think it's well deserved, and uh, and, and I'm a yes.
I got something to say about it, and I don't think people are gonna be happy when I got to say, I mean, it's too bad, and I'm referring to the people up in Hartford. Number one, our police department's been told many things for the last four or five years, a pension, a pension, a pension. They've been, they've been sitting on it, no raises for four years or six years. This little bit of amount of money to save our cops, to not leave this department, not leave this city, I'm a hundred percent for it. And furthermore, nobody that lives in Greenwich or, or Bridgeport or Bethany are gonna tell me that my police department doesn't need help. So as far as I'm concerned, this is well deserving, and I'm glad we brought it up, I'm glad you brought it up, Councilwoman Hosky could pass this. And I'm a hundred percent for it, and if anybody got anything to say about it, maybe it's my time to go up there and say something, a few of those individuals. Thank you.
And, and, and I, and I'm just gonna um say something else is that. Not to give this, i- you know, we are already severely understaffed in our police department. Our men and women are working extra hours in an effort to keep our city safe. Not to do this is a smack in their face, and then literally puts fifty thou- fifty-five thousand residents. In jeopardy, I mean, it's ju- it is unimaginable. That anyone would decide or think that not giving them this is gonna be okay. When we have consistently lost people hand over fist. We have issues recruiting because of our base pay. We're, you wanna talk about financial jeopardy, we're in jeopardy every day in our streets, you know, it, it. We're putting our police officers in jeopardy, we see what happened in Milford, where cops were like jumped. And, and they had to call for mutual aid, we, we can't even man the man hours. I, it ju- literally disgusts me to think that they wanted us to say no, it, it disgusts me, quote, disgusts me. Anyone else got anything, cause I would really just like to get to the yes, go ahead.
This, this hits very close to home with me, my husband's a West Haven police officer. He works so hard, and the men and women of West Haven work so hard. That they deserve, in my opinion, e- even more than this. They work countless hours, they're constantly ordered, they work road jobs. My husband leaves to do a midnight shift, sometimes I don't see him until the evening next day. And the things that he has done to put his life on the line. I mean, there's days I have such bad anxiety from it that I can't even go to sleep at night, so they are. One hundred percent deserving of this money, if not more.
I would say, I agree with you.
Yes, absolutely, and I'm not just saying that because of my husband, I've lived in West Haven my whole life, I know most of the police officers. And they are extremely hardworking, and anybody that has met any of them should be truly honored.
I agree.
So a roll call vote, oh, I'm s- I apologize.
Still discussion, right? So just for the record, um a- all of this based on, I mean, I asked a question the other night about ARPA money. Money and how is that gonna be used, and the mayor got an opinion from the city attorney, which is, which was distributed to the council. That all two point four million dollars of ARPA funding will be used for current officers for retention. So, um, I do not have any stake in the game on this, so I am not going to abstain. Because all of the ARPA money is going towards current police officers. Um, that said, um, again, I listened to the Marv meeting today, and some of the members. Really adamantly believe that compensation and pension weren't really an issue, that's not why. Officers are leaving, um, that's certainly not my experience, whether in the past or currently. Or any of the chiefs that I talked to that are going through retention issues as well. And they also noted, for the record, that West Haven is, if not the last, one of the last in the pay scale, was a dead bottom. So if you're a, 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 it's hard enough to find good quality uh men and women. That wanna choose a field in public safety these days, so they're hard, they're hard to recruit. And then once you try to recruit them, and they recognize either before they say yes, or a year or two or three years down the road. After they say yes, that they say, wait a minute, you know, I am, I am doing the same job or a harder job. In this municipality, and I'm, I'm getting paid at the absolute bottom of the pay scale. I have no pension for my, my wife, or my kids, or my spouse, I should say, and my kids, if something happens. To me, so if I'm an officer working under those conditions, I'm gonna say to myself that. Yes, I took an oath, I'm gonna put my life on the line, that's what I'm supposed to do, but how much does my community value me? That, um, I'm in the situation where I'm the lowest paid, one of the lowest paid police officers in the state of Connecticut. And I have no pension fund, so I do believe that compensation and benefits and pension are all factors to retention. While we're working on a pension potentially, um, for a later date, we, we, we have an opportunity right now. To work on compensation and make them not the least paid um officers in the state. So I, again, every single dollar is going for, to current officers for retention. So I, I, I am gonna vote on it, I am gonna vote in favor of it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I was at the police commission meeting on Tuesday night, I meant to say Councilman Quag. And we lost an officer resignation on Tuesday night to Narwhal for pay, which was substantially different. And Narwhal, and it is here, and also no pension, so we are doing all right then, thank you.
We absolutely are, can we have a roll call vote?
Oh, certainly.
Councilman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilwoman, uh Councilman Ronald Quagliani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Melie Garthwaite?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Ackerbally?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone?
Yes.
And Chairman Peter Masaro?
Definitely, yes.
I, do we have anything else? Dinner?
Thank you.
Okay, so this document, if we repair the windows to open and close properly and stop leaking. We're gonna spend two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that would come, if you guys don't approve window money, that's gotta come from a budget somewhere. If we replace the windows to protect the building, have energy efficiency, and have a better space for the employees, you're at six forty-four. We kinda put this on hold, we did put it on hold last time, I have an architectural firm, one of the four, they'll come out. Start specking it out, and get this out to bid, and we can do, do this job.
So in your professional opinion, Ken, cause I know you have one, years, right, years of professional opinion, um.
I started off, I started off selling windows in nineteen.
Oh my gosh, um, listen, I was quoted in the paper, did you see my quote? They got that one right, um, what is, what is your thoughts?
Uh, my thoughts are, we've already put a lot of money into City Hall, there's no new City Hall coming down the pike, these windows are dangerous, water's getting in, they're a mess. It's time to place the windows, honestly. I'm sorry.
I, I don't have anything. I don't know what you want me to say.
So I guess I'll say something, cause I, you're like in my face about it, so we're getting. All of the money, as Doug said.
Correct. Yeah, uh remember though, we literally will not spend the money, the, the, a very small amount of money will be spent. In the next three months, right, we'll, we'll commit to stuff and do engineering studies and architects, you're gonna have all the money in the bank before any big money's spent.
So I guess. This is my thought, right, so we, we're saying energy, so I understand the safety of the opening and the closing of the window. But when we say energy savings, or we're, we're, or our energy costs are going up. I don't see that, the energy bills are pretty much the same.
Tw- twenty-five, I, I, I will absolutely uh be able to prove that differently, twenty-five percent of your heat loss. Is through old drafty windows, we have a single pane window, if it's ten degrees outside, it's ten degrees on that window pane. There has been times when ice has formed on the windows because of condensation. In a replacement window that meets the energy star level, has argon, has lowe, the inside is like fifty-six degrees. When it's ten degrees outside, it's a huge difference, not even close.
So you're saying the energy costs that are what they are now, so say, you know, the heating bill is two hundred dollars a month. It's two hundred dollars a month for the last six years, because these windows have always just been trash. But now going forward, after we make the replacement, you're saying that two hundred dollar bill will drop.
Considerably, yeah.
I'm just, so, so I appreciate that, cause I'm, we've had these discussions about energy and, you know, electrical costs. Cause I'm very familiar with it, um, I guess I just wonder how far back do we go to say, oh, that's why the costs are higher, you know? Energy costs aren't hot, you know, at what point it's just, like you said, opening the window and the air going, going out. So we're just gonna do the windows for almost a million dollars.
No, six forty-four. Big difference.
Right.
Yeah.
Three hundred and fifty thousand difference for just windows.
And, and listen, the bid may come low, I'm coming back to you with the bid, so if it's lower, it's lower.
Or it's higher, it's higher, could be closer to a million.
It could be, unlikely, but it could be.
Anyone else have anything?
The only thing I got to say is. The only thing I got to say is, listen, I seen three or four windows in different departments coming down, and some people can't even open them, and it. To me, it's a safety issue, even if somebody, definitely we have a fire in here, and somebody wants to go out the window. He ain't gonna go out the window because the window's gonna come down on their back or their heads, and single pane windows, you're not gonna build a new. City hall, because we don't have forty million, I'm just picking a figure, forty million dollars to build a new city hall. I mean, let's keep what we have for another ten or fifteen years down the road. And, you know, preserve what we got.
And we know there's no asbestos if we start whipping this stuff out?
Uh, we don't have an asbestos issue in those windows, no. You don't, we do not.
Can you tell me how you know that, just for the record?
Uh, extensive testing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so you, the, this other stuff has been done, which would have disclosed that.
Correct.
I just don't wanna start um doing that, and what is that called, you know, when we had that?
The abatement.
The abatement, yes.
We, we uh have screens on the entire building, we have a map showing where the asbestos is.
Right. Yeah, and, and the sixteen thousand square feet that were remodeled a few years back is asbestos-free, we, we abated the entire area.
That, they're not getting windows over there, are they too? Sure they are.
Yeah, there's no, you know, we couldn't do the windows back then because um it was partially state funded. We got a fifty percent uh grant from the state, cause it was a board of bed office, and the conditions that they put on the window. Made the window three times more than the, than the price it should have been, so we need to do windows.
Oh, okay, when you said it was renov- whatever, I thought, I just, I thought it would be, anyone else has any, have anything to say, cause? Councilman Quagliani?
You know, my only comment is, is I, I wanna reiterate what I said, I think, last week, I was, I think when I was in this building, the windows didn't operate. Um, properly, and I know part of the ways the HVAC system's supposed to work in this building is you're supposed to have some fresh air, and. Half the time you can't open the windows, um, you know, some of the offices during the pandemic relied, right, on window business.
That's right.
Right, so you know, you had, you had the tax office, you had, you know, the um, the city clerk's office, the assessor's office, office relying on. You know, conducting business with residents through those same um windows. So in, in my mind, you know, again, we're, we're famous for deferring maintenance, and that's why our buildings fall apart well before. Their useful life, so, so either we're gonna fund, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna fix these with ARPA money, or we're gonna fix these with taxpayer money through bonding. Um, so if I had a choice, I'd pick ARPA money.
Good call.
Anyone else, you sure, cause you look like you wanna say something.
I'm gonna say something, I'm still gonna be a no, I know we talked about it over the phone, I'm still gonna be a no.
No one's made a motion, did you wanna say something? Does anyone else, um, someone want a second?
Would you like me to read it?
No, uh, we have discussion, and, and if there's any more, I'm sorry, but just, we just make sure there's no other discussion. Councilman Akko Corrali, do you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I guess we're, um. Would you like me to read it, or you can read it?
Yeah, well, if you know it's lumped in, we're just gonna take the portion of. You want me to just read it?
Yes, thank you. Okay, resolve that the city council hereby appropriates funding for the following project. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is allotted to replacement of the windows at City Hall for safety, security, and energy conservation improvements. Councilman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Melie Garthwaite?
No.
Councilwoman Sarah Ackerbally?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone?
For the safety of every resident that enters the building on a daily basis, yes.
And Chairman Peter Masaro?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. We, we have, we will do this one tonight, but we still have one more project to discuss, which is the um homeless shelter, that, we can deliver to.
Chairman, we are all set, we can recess?
Motion to recess, yes, because we have a few other items, yes.